Several pieces of good news this morning, commissioners, that I'd like to share. The U.S. Department of Labor recently announced the Rosies as the 2020 inductees into the U.S. Department of Labor Hall of Honor. The Rosies, women riveters, welders, and World War II industry workers helped manufacture planes, ships, and armaments for the U.S. and the Allies in World War II. I'd like to share a brief video this morning to highlight that. Welcome to the U.S. Department of Labor. I'm Kato Scanlon, the Solicitor of Labor. Thanks for joining us today for the special presentation of the 2020 Hall of Honor induction ceremony featuring an incredible group of American women, the Rosies.
I worked on, as a riveter, on B-29s. It was works that I'd never done before, none of us said, but we were trying to get the war over and get the boys home.
Rosie, I have been all my life for this country. I lived through the Depression, I lived through everything, and this country is the best country in the world. I would not want to live anywhere else. If they had another war at my age, I would once more sign up at 97, and I can start building ships again if they want me.
And today, I am excited to say that we have one of our very own Air Capital Riveter, Rosies, Ms. Virginia. Would you please come up?
Good morning and welcome to the commission meeting.
Well, good morning to all of you, and I'm glad to be here. Can you hear me through this mask?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so glad that we are all are wearing a mask and doing our job. I've worked for Boeing out here, drove in on a bus from Eldorado, Kansas, and saved up enough money, finally I got a room down here in Wichita at the Dennis Hotel. I don't suppose, all of you are too young to remember that. And I did enjoy my work. I think they make too much of Rosie. I know that we were behind everybody and everything, but we were there for our men. Our men did the work and went out and they slept on the cold ground and didn't have any, they don't, they didn't have telephones like they do today, you know? And my man was gone for four years before I saw him again. So I've been privileged to go around the state of Kansas representing Rosie the Riveter. I've also met so many wonderful veterans, the men that fought for our country. So thank you for having me today, and is there anything else?
Well, we just want to say thank you, thank you for your service, helping the people who are in service. So what a great honor that the National Labor recognized you all, and it just, it struck a tone with us locally because of everything that you did, that you and your, and your fellow ladies did.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. I have been privileged, my partner here, Karen Hastings, is a retired schoolteacher from high school and college, and she has taken me all over Kansas this last year with the American Legion, representing Rosie. So I thank you, Karen, for all the help you did to me. And I am blessed today because I read the newspaper, and I have been so upset about this virus stuff and people not wearing masks and doing things. And I know it's been a hard work for you people here, and thank God, it's all going to come around and everything's going to be all right. And I want you to remember, yes, we can. You can do it, okay?
Can you show us, can you show us your lunch, your lunch pail? Can you hold up your lunchbox? That is so good. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again.
And you've worked hard today, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would also like to say that Ms. Virginia is 95 years young and still hard at work. We actually had to pull her away from her, her schedule to come here this morning, so we're very appreciative that you did find your way to us this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
All right. Late last week, we had the opportunity to participate in an announcement related to the North Junction. Local, state, federal leaders participated in this announcement to announce a $25 million federal grant funding the gold phase of the North Junction project. Chairman was able to participate in this event, and so I will play a brief snippet of that, and then I will let him hopefully come back and join us and make a few brief comments on this as well.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for allowing me to say a couple of words. I just, I've been a part of this project for a number of years. As far as seeing how it evolves, I want to thank Secretary Julia Rens at KDOT and Mike King, Secretary before that, he did a, helped lay some groundwork. And it really came together when, in the city of Wichita area businesses and the chamber got in one room and tried to prioritize, what do we need to do to be on the same page?
So Chairman, if you'd like to make a few comments about the project?
Well, my comments, and I want to thank Commissioner David Dennis for his help as well during, when I was at the city, and David was working hard here at the county to get us all on the same page. Jim, I want to thank you and David Spears for all the work that you did cooperatively. I think we all witnessed how when, when the city, the county, the businesses, the state, and even our, even our fellow surrounding counties and surrounding cities all, all agreed that this project was of utmost importance for the future, current, fix current problems, and, and it just went, it just was a powerful thing to have, to have this come together, and then, and our lobbyist in Washington helped. I know Secretary Lorenz, again, made a, a great couple of phone calls, but we had our senators and Congressman Estes, so it was a real team effort. Everybody should take credit a little bit. I don't know who the, I don't know who got us to the finish line, but somehow we got there. So David, I don't know if you want to say anything, it's...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, it was a team effort. We've been working on this for a number of years with all of our partners in the community, with the chamber, with their folks, with REEP, with the city of Wichita, and especially thanks to Senator Pat Roberts and Senator Moran, Congressman Estes, because they played a huge part in this. Slight correction, we got $21 million instead of 25, I believe, but...
Right, we asked for 25.
We asked for 25, and we're very proud to have 21. The main thing that I want to make sure the public understands is that we've been working for over a year now upon 235, but that's only the first phase, and it won't correct the congestion that we've had in the past. This next phase is the one where we'll be able to correct the congestion that we're seeing in that North Junction. So Secretary Lorenz was a big part of this. I want to thank her very much for, for her participation in the entire state of Kansas and KDOT. So thank you for allowing me to say a few words, but it was truly a team effort that made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I'll just close by saying a similar effort was done a handful of years ago on East Kellogg and turned that project into a, from a 12-year project to it's almost done in five years and financially supported by, so we've got two major projects we've accomplished here in this by working together with our, with various partners. In that case, it took the Turnpike Authority and KTA and things like that, but, so anyway, so we'll just thank you for allowing me to say a few words, and thank you again, Commissioner Dennis, for your work during these years on that.
Absolutely. And lastly, this week is Lifeline Awareness Week. The Kansas Corporation Commission and the Kansas Association of Counties is helping to promote this Lifeline program. You can see on our screen, if you go to kcc.kas.gov, you'll find more information about the program, which connects eligible, low-income families and individuals to services they need to live and learn and fully participate in the community. Currently, more than 10 million Americans are low-income, and including in that, excuse me, is 35,000 citizens here in Kansas. Those folks are benefiting from this Lifeline program, and we are very fortunate to have this here in Sedgwick County and in the state of Kansas. So if you would like to go to kcc.kas.gov for more information about the program, I encourage you to do so. Are there any other comments about this program, Commissioner?
Yes, Kate, can you scroll down? There's a, there's a time that they can apply for this, and there's also a breakdown of income levels. There you go, right in there. So everybody that pays your phone bill, I'm just kind of familiar with this a little bit, part of your phone bill, there's one of those little taxes in there, goes to this Lifeline-type operations, and it allows underserved and smaller-income people to have a discounted telephone service. So I think it's important that we help promote to get this message out. We also have this in, in English and Spanish, and so it, I think it's limited, I can't see what dates, it's limited on time, so they need to apply, and it's a pretty easy thing to get. So thank you, Kate, for letting us share this with the community.
Absolutely, and we'll be sharing this on social media as well. On the agenda this morning, we have a proclamation declaring Constitution Week, a request for a conditional use permit in District 1, then a discussion of the CARES Act. The Dump Trucks for Public Works will be back on the agenda, and at the end of today's meeting, we will receive public comments for the public agenda. So Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Kate, and appreciate the, the three items we've had beforehand. It's a good news, good news day so far. Okay, I'll, I'll call the, call the meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners Wednesday, September 16th to order. Madam Clerk?
invocation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good morning. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Before we get to the next item, I just want to make sure that the public knows that we've kind of switched around. You see, we're sitting in a familiar place that we've been at before when, when the COVID hit us, and we've also had considerations so about, just wanted to repeat that our, we have moved the public agenda items to the end of the meeting, which was, was that part of an agreement that could happen, that was approved back in 2016 before, before most of our times? And this allows us to get some of this business done, especially the very important part of, of the CARES funding and things like that are incredibly important, need attention and time for that. And then we will be, in the future, we will be doing this. We will try to estimate what time our meeting could be over, and that way we're saying no sooner than, that way the public, trying to go out to the extension center, they know that they don't need to be if we're there until that time. If our meeting ends before 10:30, then we will just recess and, and come back to the, to the meeting at 10:30. It will be a Zoom, Zoom call, and there's a, there'll be Zoom capabilities for this table here, and each commissioner also will have the Zoom capability in their own office. The comments will come, and of course, I think Tanya will review that again right before we start, but the comments from the citizens will be there, and if a commissioner has a question, obviously, they can ask, and then they'll move to the next comment. We can have public speaking from three to five minutes, anywhere from three to five minutes. Due to the, the large number of people that signed up, we have selected three minutes for today's public agenda at the end of the meeting. So just some of that housekeeping that might look a little foreign to some, but with that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2020.
Commissioners, if, if it's okay with you all, there's minutes of July 22nd, 24th, and 29th that we've all had a chance to review. I would like to take A, B, and C, which is the minutes, regular minutes, and a special meeting minutes on the July 24th, and special meeting minutes July 29th. If, okay?
Thank you.
Motion and a second to approve all three of these A, B, and C minutes. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item D, proclamation declaring Constitution Week.
Thank you. I'd like to hand this over to Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to read today's proclamation on Constitution Week. It says, "Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to give official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all of the rights and responsibilities with, with which that privilege involves. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion we would adopt this proclamation."
Second. All right, a motion and a second. Thank you for your service, Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis. If you have anything to add, this is a great anniversary. Okay, made a motion and a second to pre-proclamation. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman, we have two representatives from the Daughters of the American Revolution to receive the proclamation. Please welcome Vicki Churchman and Vicki Timmons to our boardroom.
Okay, Mr. Howell, would you present? Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you. On behalf of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, I would like to thank Chairman Meitzner and the Sedgwick County Commissioners for recognizing Constitution Week with this proclamation. In September 1787, the U.S., United States was a nation on the brink. It had won the War of Independence from England but was losing the peace. The national treasury was virtually empty, the economy was faltering, and national and state debts went unpaid. Thirteen individual states had to find a way to come together under one government. It was against this backdrop that the Constitution was written. During the long sweltering summer of 1787, behind locked doors and windows, the men of the Continental Congress devised a plan based on three co-equal branches to lead our new republic into the future. This form of government had never been tried before, and no one knew if it would work. This year, we celebrate the 233rd birthday of our U.S. Constitution. We're older than we thought. It is the oldest and shortest-written Constitution of any major government in existence today. Although it has been amended 27 times over the years, the Constitution still stands as the supreme law of the land. The Daughters of the American Revolution celebrate these American patriots. Our members are not able to be in the Wichita area schools and classrooms this week due to COVID-19, but we will continue to share the story of the Constitution and the history of the beginning of this great nation. Thank you again for the proclamation.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the fact that each year, the Daughters of the American Revolution come and help us celebrate this act. My sister and niece and family are all members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and they remind me continuously how important that that organization is and how that you'd help us support our Constitution. Commissioner Howell and I both served in the military, and we swore to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign, domestic, and it's important, and it's important that we recognize this. So thank you very much again for being here each year to help us celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Well said. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to say thank you for, for helping us reflect on the Constitution each year. It's one of these things, I think we take the Constitution for granted, and we don't read it enough, we don't know enough about it, we rarely remember the Constitution. I hate to say that, but policymakers, I think, sometimes forget that there are guidelines within the Constitution for us to, to, to guardrails, let's talk about that, you know, to respect as we make policy. So I want to say thank you for helping us remember that. I will endeavor to read the Constitution again this week. I think that's my personal, my personal commitment to, to what this represents to me personally. As an adult, I really appreciate the Constitution more than I ever did as a child. I do know that our educators are doing the best they can to talk about the Constitution and the principles that it contains, but under the COVID situation, obviously, it's going to be more difficult this year. But as an adult, I want to say I really have spent more time in the last couple of decades, you know, if you are reading and appreciating the Constitution personally, so it's a, it's a, it's not, I don't, some people might debate on this whether it's divinely inspired or not, but I think it's one of the very best documents ever created in the history of mankind, so thank you for helping us remember that today.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell, for your comments, and I don't see any other, but thank you again for all you do. Okay. Oh, good, okay. Very good. Okay, have a great day. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item E, CON 2020 Jazz 00026, accounting conditional use to permit expansion of oil drilling and production on land zoned RR Royal Residential generally located on the north side of East K-254 Highway, south side of East 69th Street North, and east of north 127th Street East, 13160 East 69th Street North.
Okay, good morning, Scott, how are you?
Good morning, I'm, I'm well, thank you.
Welcome to the meeting, thank you.
So as the PowerPoints get distributed there, Scott Wadel from the Planning Department, here to present on the item. In this case, the applicants are requesting a conditional use for the expansion of oil and drilling, oil drilling and production on land-zoned rural residential. The site is located between 254 and 69th Street North, and 127th Street and 147th Street. The site has had oil wells on it since the 1930s, and portions are in agricultural use. The applicant has indicated that the proposed conditional use is generally to allow for reworking of the existing oil field with six new wells to be drilled at the site. The agenda report and attached packet includes information about the operations and notation that the operations will be in compliance with all requirements of the Kansas Corporation Commission, which regulates oil and gas operations within the state of Kansas. The site is surrounded by properties zoned rural residential. Many of the properties are in use for agriculture, active oil wells, plugged and abandoned wells. There are single-family residences along 127th Street and along the north side of 69th Street. In many cases, the oil activities at the site predates the residential uses nearby. The Planning Commission heard this matter and conducted the public hearing on August 6th. The Planning Commission voted 11 to 3 to approve the conditional use. Multiple neighbors spoke in opposition at the MAPC meeting. The concerns expressed were generally related to environmental issues and impacts from the proposed oil well activities. Protest were filed representing 26.23% of the notification area, which exceeds the 20% threshold and requires a supermajority vote of the commission to approve, so four out of five. Potential actions by the commission are detailed in the staff report and include the following: Approve the conditional use as recommended by the MAPC, which would require four out of five votes. Deny the application by making alternative findings and override the MAPC recommendation, which would also require four out of five votes. Return the case to the MAPC for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for this action, which would require a simple majority, so three out of five. It's my understanding that the applicant and members of the public are here today to speak on this item.
Okay, are there any questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question, I've just got a comment. I have received ex parte contact by phone call, by email, and by letter, and it does not impact my decision-making on this process that we're going to undertake. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I as well have received the same ex parte communication via email and phone call, both supporting and opposing this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I also have received ex parte communication, phone calls, emails, and I believe that's it. Both proponents and opponents have contacted me, but I am absolutely neutral and will let the data speak to me today. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I too have had ex parte contact with voicemail and letter and email.
And I as well have had all the same comments. I've had ex parte communication, and for the record, we have to reveal that for the record. That's why we've all mentioned it. So with that, is there any questions right now to, to Scott? I don't see any, Scott, so we will go to a public comment. I think somebody wants to address us. I'm not sure any order. But thank you. So sir, state your name and your, and an address or in anything that identified. Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Mike Eck, and I represent AGV Corp., the applicant.
Hello, Mr. Eck. Welcome, welcome to the meeting.
My address is 12901 West Alderney Court, here in Wichita. And you received my email dated February, or September 12th, documenting my conversations with a few of the objectors. I was told that Rusty and Leslie Cryer were persons that engaged conversation with neighbors. I, I perceive their first call was probably to Rusty's in-laws who live in Connor, Montana. They own 20 acres of land on the east side. It's, it doesn't have a residence on that land. The Cryers do own 20 acres as well in that same area. When I spoke to Bruce and Rachel Brown, who were the, another couple that objected to the, the application, they said the only reason, the only reason they objected to it was because Rusty's brother gave Bruce Brown a kidney, and they felt pretty obligated to acquiesce to what the neighbors were requesting of them. The next day, I spoke with Rusty and Leslie Cryer in their home for, for about two hours, and I told them about AGV Corp., I told them about our 40-year history, I told them about our gel, just Kent Roberts, who's going to speak for just a couple of minutes after I conclude my comments, and it went well. Rusty said if roles were reversed, if he were us, he'd probably want to do the same thing, but they were concerned about the odor. And subsequent to that conversation, I said, "Our, our initial drilling activity will be more, way more to the south side of the property, just north of 254." And I said... And I said, "If we're successful," and our drilling won't happen probably this year, and I don't know if it'll ever happen if prices don't come up a little bit, "but," I said, "if we're successful in drilling our first test well just north of 254, we will lay a line over to the existing tank battery location that we operate two wells we bought at a oil auction six months ago." That's the timeframe we've been operating wells in that area. And I said, "We got a tank battery location on that map that's noted," and I said, "There'll be no new tank batteries." And so Rusty asked me if we had drilled in the area, and I said, "Of course, yes, we did about 10 months ago or so. We drilled a well in Butler County about 12 to 15 miles northeast of your property here." He said, "Can we go up and look at it?" I said, "Of course." So, we went up and looked at the well, and he was impressed with the rock, the leased road, and the farmer's field was all cleaned up, and there was a dike around the tank batteries, and he liked that. And I took him out to the pumping unit, and I said, "Do you smell anything here?" He said, "No." So, I took him to the tank battery location, and we opened the top, the lid, and I said, "Do you smell anything?" He said, "Not, not, yeah, a little bit, but not too bad." I said, "Okay." And had a good conversation, and again, I just want to amplify that there will be no new tank battery setup to create more odor. And then I spoke to Jerry Lott, another objector. He lives on the north, and you have a map that was distributed, I gave it to the lady this morning, similar to this in color. But right here is 254, and the Cryers live over here on the east side, and, excuse me, and Jerry Lott and his son-in-law Derrick Schwartz owned this property up here in red to the north. So, the wells down here have been here 30 years, or more, 30 to 40 years right here. So, prevailing south wind, these tank batteries have been here quite a while that we operate, but if any person would be, really want to object to the odor, it would be the folks to the north, I would think, prevailing south wind. So, I talked to Jerry Lott, and he said, "Mike," he said, "That's in my email to you September 12th." He said, "I don't have a problem with what you guys want to do. It's not going to affect me in any way, and I can't speak for my son-in-law, but I'm not, I'm not going to get in your way." I said, "Why'd you object?" He said, "Well, the Cryers came over here and asked that I sign. I thought it would be neighborly, and I'm 70 years old, and I want to get along." And so, I contacted the Planning Commission. You have this email as well dated September 14th that was handed out this morning, and they told me that, I said, I asked them the question. I said, "What if, what if Jerry Lott and Derrick Schwartz," and at that time, I had not talked to Derrick Schwartz. I said, "What would happen to the percentage of objectors land planned if Jerry Lott and Derrick Schwartz would not object, would withdraw their objection?" I said, "That wouldn't cause there not to be the need for a meeting and a vote, but just what if?" And they told me on September 14th that if Lotts and Schwartz would withdraw their objections, that would reduce it to 19.42. I have an email, and you have it as well, dated September 15th, from Jerry Lott, and it says, "Mike," I won't read the whole email, but it says, the final statement, "Please use this email to remove my name from objecting to your proceeding." Oil well activity. On 5/14 yesterday, Derrick Schwartz sent me the same email, please, and you've got it in your pocket, "Please use this email to remove my name from objecting to your proceeding."
Mike, do you have, do you have any other information? I know we kind of limited.
Okay, I'm done.
But that's okay. If you had something else that was...
No, I'm done.
And thanks for this information.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any questions at this point from the commission.
If there's, Kent Roberts, our geologist, for 18 years is here. And if you would like to have Kent speak on behalf of AGV relative to our being in compliance with all KC rules and regulations, he's the point person for us there. He's here to answer your questions.
Okay. Well, let's stick around because we may have some. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes. So, just a question, Mr. Eck. And I know when we, when we talked, you and your family have done this for decades.
Over 40 years.
Right. And no, no issues with KCC or anything?
We have been doing this for 40 years, more or less, and we've had no suits or problems with any of neighbors, landowners, tenants, ever. I told the Cryers, I said, "I'm here not because I have to be here. I said, "I was, I think with only 26%, I'm prayerfully, hopefully, it'll pass, but I'm here because your concerns are our concerns, and we want to address your concerns now and forever."
Yeah. No, that's what I understood. In fact, I hear the only bad thing about you is that you've been friends with Jeff Blubow's family for decades.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the only option.
They're long, they're long, we were raised on Dairy Farm and their neighbors, yeah. You don't want me to spend time talking about it.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eck. If you and your geologists can stick around in case there's any follow-up questions, that would be great. Okay. We have another speaker signed up? Go. We're ready. Right. Go to the podium and state your name and address, and we kind of know what the purpose you're here for, and we typically on these, you're limited to five minutes, give or take. We had a little bit of extra time, so feel free to address us. So, good morning.
Thank you. I'm Rusty Cryer, my wife Leslie.
Hi, Rusty.
We live at 6265 North 143rd Street. We're the property that's surrounded on the north, and the west, and the south of the proposed zoning change. And our primary, we feel like we have three primary concerns. I'm a little bit nervous because I feel there's a lot at stake here for us, but one is health. My wife included some links to some medical articles about living close in the scent coming from the fumes of the oil wells. So, we have four kids, age 16, down to three. One is quality of life, just our hope in moving out there was to retire and live there until they make us go to the old folks' home, and just don't want to, didn't want to be that close to oil wells and the scent and the struggle with that. And then one is property values. If it's less desirable to live there, it negatively affects us. And I just want, I want you to know, I believe in the free market economy. I believe in the way that America does business, and I understand Mr. Eck's position. He came out and visited with us, very nice man, very civil, good conversation. But we have a couple of small businesses as well, and, you know, when we go do a job for someone, it doesn't leave any of the neighbors in a worse position. When I put a roof on for someone, the neighbors aren't struggling with that, and when I, when we do a construction project, the neighbors aren't struggling with that. So, this is a little more unique situation. And for us, when I talk about our land, our property, our home that we have there, this is the, this is the greatest equity asset that we have in our family. Mr. Eck and his brother, you know, they're very successful businessmen, a lot of things, very admirable, the businesses they've built. So, in essence, this is a hobby business for them, not that they treat it like play or they're not serious about it, but they don't need this for livelihood. This, this is going to affect us, this is going to affect our daily lives. So, I don't know how the commission sees these things. I don't know how, if this is going to pass or not. As it is, I have some real concerns. Mr. Eck, he did, he did tell me that their intent was to keep the battery tanks on the opposite side of the property, that, and I think that's great. When we went to the oil well and he took me there, there was slight scent at the well itself, but it wasn't pumping. But there was significant, significant fumes at the battery tanks. That's where the majority of the source, of the source was. I did ask for that, that they would, that keeping the battery tanks on the opposite side of the program, if I could get that in writing, and he did say in the email it was their intent, which that gives me some level of comfort, but not much. So, I don't know if there's other concessions that can be made, whether directional drilling is a possibility, if they'd be willing to sign something that says they would keep the battery tanks always on the west side of the property. Our concern is it comes up within a couple hundred yards of our house, the boundary does, about 250 yards from our house. So, and AGV, they may not always own this. It may get grandfathered, they may sell it, it may get grandfathered to someone else, and we'd be in this situation in the future. So, I don't know if in the proceedings here, we can make some concessions to move the boundary farther from our house, to even plant cedar trees around some of these drilling units to camouflage, put electric, make electric motors instead. So, there are several things that could give me a greater level of comfort, but my ask is that you'd turn it down. But if we can't, then if we could make sure that some concessions get documented, if it does get approved, so.
Okay. Is your wife, Leslie?
Just one other thing. The Browns that he spoke about have moved. There's new neighbors, and the owner is here to speak as well, but they were, they had already sold their property. And their, our home and the Browns' home, out of all the landowners, are the closest ones who live next to these proposed wells. The others are mostly just farmed, so we're the ones direct, our homes are most directed by the fumes and the health risks and the risk to the resale if we should have to move.
Okay. Is there any questions for the commission at this point? I don't see any, so thank you for sharing your story, and if you wanted to, I think we're running out of space, so you need to exit, and then, but you can stick around if we have any. Oh, we've got places. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Okay, next speaker, if there's another one. Okay. Good morning. Please state your name and address, and we traditionally have five minutes to speak. We've been right around there, so if you can address us, thank you.
Okay. My name's Dwayne Corcoran. Address is 6225 North 143rd Street East, I believe. I just moved there. Um, I don't, my wife would be here, but she's teaching, having fun remote, right? So, just to give you background, we moved in on the 1st of September. We were never informed of anything that was going on. I can't tell you the date, but it was mid-July when we put our offer in and got it accepted and all that. So, we did find out through the Cryers, you know, they'd reached out to us just to tell us what was going on, and, you know, we're a little bit upset because it should have been disclosed to us. We looked for four-plus years for a property, me and my wife. We've got three kids and a dog, and now ducks. And we've really been watching for this kind of situation, all the properties we've looked at, to make sure that it was rural and that it was zoned, non-commercial, non-industrial, whatever designation oil gets. We were looking for a residential. And if you know the property, our house is very west in the property. The old road that comes off 254, I don't know what it was called, is part of our drive, and we're right on the property line. And conversations that we've had with Mr. Eck and with the Cryers, and again, I'm just learning this stuff, they're 330 yards, I think, is the maximum they could be from our property, and we are within probably 12 feet. I don't have a survey. Our house sits on our property line. So, we are very concerned about the prospect of a football field away, there'll be oil drills. We did have the conversation when we met with Mr. Eck about the number of oil wells that could go on, and never really got a complete answer, but my understanding of it all was that they could put one per 10 acres. And my comment back was, "That's 25." And yeah, there's some lines and commissions and stuff that they'd have to figure out, but that's quite a few as opposed to two, or six, or five. So, I don't understand that exactly, but we're concerned. If you go down, I don't know, I'm hoping that someone out of here has drove down 254. There is a strong sulfur smell from the oil wells if you get, I would say Greenwood's Road and 254, and from my understanding, it is not Mr. X. You know, drills that are causing that, they're the ones south of 254, but it is very strong. And there is no guarantees that sulfur won't be in the next ones that are drilled straight west of our property. And that's our concern more than anything, is that there is no guarantee, and, you know, I'm from Canada. We've got a lot of sulfur around the Canadian Shield, and it's not going to be pleasant for any residential, quality of life or health-wise. So, if someone could enlighten me more, I'd be more comfortable, but it's not what we signed up for. And I, I'm the same as Rusty. I'm a small businessman, struggling along, and I'd like to see everybody do what they need to do to make a living, but I also want to have a good quality of life, and that's what our goal is, same forever home. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell has a question?
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman. Just want to clarify, you said two numbers that I need to have, I need to understand a little bit more. You said 330 yards, and you said a football field. So, is it 330 yards or is it 300 feet? 330 feet?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm meters, and I'm not sure even football much, but that's what I was explaining, so.
That's fine. And where on that map approximately is your home? Can just, you can just describe it with your words, it's fine.
Well, I'm not familiar totally of the map, but I believe we're right, yeah, Rusty's got it.
Okay. So, the nearest well to you would be the one that's close to the highway, the one, the proposed well, the one that's closest to the highway there. The southeast proposed well would be the closest to your home?
I believe so. Like I said, I just, that night, seen, seen some of the dots on the map, right?
Thank you for your, thank you for your testimony today. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, we have no other speakers, so we will close the public comment. Any questions? I might have one, but I'll respect the commission. Do you have a question, Jim? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know who can answer the questions, but I'm reading the backup material in the, in the agenda here, and there was a discussion about salt water. There's a question about flaring off gas that might be, I guess it's a thing in some locations. Can someone please clarify if there's a issue with salt water, what the plan is there, or if there's a plan to do any flaring off of the gas? And then I'm a little bit confused, a little bit, on the, on the battery tanks, if there's going to be new battery tanks, or are they going to use just existing battery tanks that are already on the property? So, I'd like those three questions answered, please.
Yes. Please approach the, make sure you state your name for the record.
Excuse me. My name is Kent Roberts. I live at 2510 Waters Edge, here in Wichita.
Okay.
I've been a resident for 36 years. To answer your question, disposal well, there is an existing disposal well on the Erdwin lease, which is the west property. That well was originally put in there in, I think, 1926, reworked in 1946, and then in 2014, reworked again. But that disposes water... But that disposes water in what we call the granite wash, which is between 3,400 feet below the surface to roughly 4,000 feet below the surface. As far as gas flaring or anything like that, there will not be any gas flaring at all. That's, we're not allowed to do that, per the Corporation Commission rules.
And battery tanks?
The tank batteries on what we have, the Erdwine and Stoli leases that are currently in production, those tank batteries are in place, and I don't anticipate or plan to move those or add anything new south of the creek. So any new wells on the east side of that property would be piped into those existing tanks. We might have to add another stock tank, a free water knockout, something to that effect, but it would be at that, at that existing site, is where it would be. If our drilling is successful and we move north of the creek, then we might need to put in a new tank battery facility up there. But I'm going to keep that as far away from any residents that, as I can, that's practical.
Curiously, how did you determine the six locations on the land?
Uh, subsurface mapping.
Okay. That's fine. I, I have a question for staff, I think. Thank you for your answers. If there was going to be a, a proposal to add more than these six new wells, would there be a repeat of this process to get approval for the other, potential other well locations in the future?
Sure. Good question. I'm going to defer to Dave Yerout on that one.
Just a point of clarification, the six locations are defined in the backup material, so I don't know if that's part of the approval process today or not.
And I'll bring up the, the slides, so you can see those. Dave, you want to come on up?
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioner Hal, if you would, what was the question?
If there, in the backup material, it defines the six locations for the proposed wells. I don't know if we're approving those six locations with our, with our consideration today, if we were to, if we were to approve this, are we, are we specifically approving those six locations?
That's their request, yes.
If there's a, if there was a plan to add more locations in the future, would the applicant have to go through this process again to get additional locations?
It's my understanding, the way the rules are written, this request is for the six locations identified within the boundary of what they've shown. If they want to bring in more wells in the future, they'll have to come back and amend the request. You'll notice on this map, well, the map that shows the boundary, the little boxes at the south of, of the property, if I can move, those boxes at the south end, um, those, those are locations primarily of the existing wells and previous zoning actions on this property. What their application for, the, the black outline shows all the property that they have under lease for operation, but they drew the boundary coming in 300 feet from the outer boundary of what they leased. So they actually own all this property all the way around, but the, the application was reduced in area because that's what the KCC rules say, that they cannot place a well closer than 300 feet from the outer boundary of their lease area.
I don't think I have any other questions, but I would just say, if there was language in this that, that restricted, if you will, the, the tanks to a certain part of the property, that would be a good addition to the, to the paperwork. I, I don't know how to do that today, but.
Well, the applica, or the recommendation from the MAPC does not address that. If you wish to add language to that, that effectively is amending the recommendation that planning commission will need the four votes.
Well, it requires four votes, no matter what we do, unless we send it back.
Yes.
That's right. Thank you, Chairman, and Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Dave, while we got you up there, one of the homeowners asked a question about electric motors. I know that during the phone call that I had with Mr. Eck, he said he was planning on putting electric motors on, on the wells to keep the noise down. Is that a requirement in our conditional use?
Uh, no, that, that would really fall within the purview of the Kansas Corporation Commission, which controls and sets mandatory requirements regarding how the operation of wells occurs. So it would really be more of a KCC issue. I don't know, I would refer to legal counsel, whether they think we could add specific language that would restrict it to oil motors on the, the pump jacks or not. I, I really don't know.
Justin.
Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Dennis, to your question on that, I think that the, I believe that that's a condition that might be appropriate to first ask the applicant if they would have any objection to it, especially if they would not have any objection to it, then I, I think you could add it in there as a condition without there being any issues. I, Dave is correct that the KCC does regulate most of these types of things, but if there's no objection from the applicant, it sounds like that's what they're planning, that might be the best course to inquire.
Okay. Can I ask Mr. Eck? He addressed it once during the phone call with me.
In that area, there's not enough gas produced with the wells to run a gas engine, so short of running propane out there, which is really expensive, electricity is our only option, and that is what we would do.
Okay. So you wouldn't oppose having that as, as an item, as a conditional use, to have electric motors on the pump jacks?
I would not oppose that, no.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
And we just had a positive nod from Mr. Eck as well. Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. In the backup material, I don't see where anyone addressed the question from the criers around health risks. Who, who has answered the health risk, the cancer risk, the headaches, migraines, dizziness of being within 500 feet of this property?
That was put into the material that was submitted at the MAPC meeting. Again, that was statements of concern, and they cited sources coming off the internet, Googling questions, but there was no substantive things, and no, the, the applicants who were trying to get in, to participate in that meeting, were having technical difficulties, but staff has no particular issues that we were able to respond to, that's kind of out of our purview of a land use issue, other than the historic information. We've had oil wells producing all over the state of Kansas for decades, and, and many people living close that.
So there should be some data, then, if people are living close to these. I mean, is there, and I'm just not ready to vote yes on this with those heavily, those, those heavy concerns. I'll, I'll just be real frank with everybody here. I mean, I think that we should, we should consider that as something to take serious when we're dealing with families with young children. So that's, that's where I'm at with this. I mean, I, I understand that it's not in your purview, but as a commissioner sitting on this board, I think it's important. And as a member of the Board of Health, that's something that I want to take seriously. And so I, I'm not ready to vote on this until I have those questions answered by a health professional.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question on the health issues, doesn't KCC address this? They're living under KCC.
Well, they have operational rules and regulations that are pretty strict statewide through the KCC and the oil and gas industry statewide, and to the extent issues are, yes, they have the access to ring in the Kansas Department of Health on any issue that materializes. That's the extent of my knowledge on that.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is, is that in our backup somewhere that you could point me to?
I don't know if that's in our backup, but KCC runs all the oil and gas in the state of Kansas. I have a gas well, so I'm aware of some of the requirements, so that's the reason I asked the question, and I don't know if it's in our backup, but.
Well, forgive me for not knowing that answer, but I think it's important for me to, to be able to make that decision.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood, KCC has a lot of rules and regulations on the operation of oil and gas wells in the state of Kansas, and I know that not based on what I read in here, but based on my own experience. Thank you.
Okay. I had one quick question. Did you, Mr. Eck, did you mention that you, or were you going to pipe the first wells over to the pump stations? Which is what the criers were, or, as Commissioner Dennis said, if you would not object to the issue he brought up, would you object if you, if we amend to make sure that at least the first?
Sir, we'll need you at the podium, too, please.
Were going to be piped?
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, the existing tank battery on that Stoli property, which is the eastern part of that, any wells drilled south of the, the creek, or that flood plain to the, on the north area, any of those wells will be, we would install piping underground from the wellhead to the tank battery site.
Okay. And would there be an objection if we added that as a, as a requirement into this? Okay. No, you're, you're all right with that?
We're good with that, yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two points of clarification. How many, how many active wells are currently on the property?
Two producing wells, one disposal well.
Okay, and these wells have been act, been active in, in existing for how long?
These wells were drilled in 2014.
Okay. I mean, the, the.
The pumping wells.
The pumping wells.
Yeah, yes.
But there's been wells on the property since?
Oh, in the 1929, 1930, when the first wells were drilled.
Have there been active wells on the property continuously since the 1930s?
Uh, no, they were, some of those wells were plugged out in the late 50s.
Okay.
And the disposal well was still intact, but then new drilling in 2014.
Okay, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to figure out is whether the criers or this new other property owner that purchased property recently, if they had knowledge of the wet, of the wells, if they were active, and potentially if there, if there were odors on the property nearby, when they made decisions to purchase the property?
Yes, the, well, across the road to the south, there's been production continuously on that area, I think, since the late 20s, early 30s, with new drilling activity going on as well in the early 2000s. And there, from what my understanding is, they built their house on that property in 2017, three years after that production was established on our lease.
That, to me, is a very noteworthy point here. I, I think the, you know, the idea that there wasn't knowledge, if there's wells all around there, and those wells were active, then, then the decisions to live there were, were already something that, they made that decision with that knowledge, apparently. Unless somebody wants to speak to that, that's my understanding right now. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm ready to make a motion, but I heard Commissioner Dennis had talked about, you were wanting that amendment about the electric motors for the pumps, so I wanted to make sure, did you just want to make a motion with that, since you wanted to amend?
Well, I was going to let the owner of the district make the motion, but I, I would like that be included, that they require electric motors.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. We have one more, there's one more document that was just given to me, that I want to make sure the commission has a copy of it. They're making copies of it real quick. Did you have a question for the property owner?
If they wanted to clarify.
Okay.
If they wanted to clarify answers to my question, that would be good information.
They can come in? Yeah, please, please come in, to, to the podium, please.
When we built and bought our property, this is our property here, there are existing wells pumping right here, but we do not smell those, we're not affected by the fumes. So that's why we bought the property, and that's why we built. We've owned the property for about 10 years, and we were just able to finally build and move out in 2017. But these wells are far enough away that it did not affect our decision to buy or build. Wells here would certainly have affected our decision because we don't want to be affected by the, the fumes, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Did you get your answer, Commissioner Hall, or I? Okay. Mr. Eck, or, or your name?
Can you, can you explain what you just handed to us?
This map, Exhibit 3. Sorry, it's not displayed publicly for the public to see, but, but the commission's looking at.
Everybody's looking? Yeah, this was a map, basically, that is on the KGS website, and what I did was outline, this is a portion of Butler County, Sedgwick County.
That would be in the yellow?
And the Greenwich Field is outlined in the yellow. The Greenwich Field, as the KGS recognizes it, that's outlined in yellow, that's the Greenwich Field, discovered in 1929. The area in the middle, in, outlined in green, is the subject area of this.
Correct.
Application. And all the little black dots, or they might have a slash through them, those are plugged wells. If there's not, if it's just a black dot, that's a, a current producing well.
Okay.
And the open circles are what were determined as dry holes, or non-producing wells.
Okay. So the green outlined area is your lease for ABG, the area of interest?
That's the area of interest, yeah.
But, and it's larger than, than the application for this permit? That boundary's a little bit smaller, that's because you were, on the west, on the west end, for sure.
Well, all, yeah, pretty, and pretty much, yeah, that green outlines the, the oil and gas leases that are of record.
Right.
But our application, we have pulled that in at least 300 feet.
I see what you're saying.
On most edges, because the KCC, we're allowed to drill within 330 feet of a lease boundary.
Okay.
Unless it's unitized.
Okay. Helpful information. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'm willing to make a motion that, that we approve this with two items of correction, electric, electric motors, and that the south wells will be pumped into the existing, will be piped into the existing, whatever that word is. So that, that'll be my motion. Tank batteries. So that would be, your concern about six is already addressed, because that's the application, so we don't need to put that in there? All right. So that's my motion, is to approve with those two caveats.
Second?
Been a motion and a second. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I guess I'm just concerned that no one else is concerned about the health risks, that we haven't even, I mean, it's like you guys just completely just didn't even pay attention to what I said. I would like to make a substitute motion for that reason, because to defer this a week so that we could at least talk with a health professional about what some of these concerns are. I think it's important that we take at least that time to go over this for the sake of the families that have invested in this property, who do plan to live there for quite some time. I think that's only prudent, given we are the Board of Health, to even discuss the health effects that could potentially be affected by these wells. So I would make a substitute motion, we defer this for a week, to confer with some, a health professional, to at least discuss the health risks that the protest petition discusses.
Okay, there's a substitute motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Cruz, I do not see a second, so the substitute motion fails for lack of a second. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. And Commissioner Cruz, I don't want to discount your concerns, but I do believe that they're addressed by KCC. That's why that I didn't second your motion, so I didn't want you to think that I completely disregarded your, your concerns. Thank you.
Okay. So we're back to the original motion with the two items added to that. So no other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, four to one. All right. Thank you, Mr. Eck and others for being here. Thank you, Scott, for explaining. David Yerout, thank you. Get, get a second to let the room clear. We'll get, get a second to let the room clear, and we'll go to the next item. And for the public, I'll just mention that we had said no earlier than ten-thirty, that, that case went a little long, so obviously, the public agenda will be starting after ten-thirty. We also have a, a couple of brief executive sessions as well, so, so it'll be, it'll be a little while before we get to the exec, to the public speaking. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Discussion of Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Chairman, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager, on this item today. There are actually three sections that we're gonna talk about, and at the end of it, we'll need two receiving files and two votes from you. Brent will get up first and talk about external funding program status. Overall, we would like a receiving file, but there is one section within this that deals with small business safe operating grant agreements, which we will actually have to ask you to vote on, and Brent will tell you when that point gets there. And then Lindsey will talk about a request for purchase for the District Court for some technology needs, that also will, will ask for a vote of the people on. And then Lindsey will also then just go through her routine COVID spending status updates, which will be received and filed. So Brent, if you'd get us started, please.
Morning, Brent.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, County Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. I wanted to visit this morning about four of our external funding programs that are being funded as part of the CARES Act funding that we've been entrusted. And as Tom said, one of these will require a vote, but we'll get to that in just a minute. So I guess to give you a status report, we're running a little bit ahead of schedule on a couple of them. One, we're seeing a bit of date slippage, and the other, we seem to be right on time with. So to begin with, let's look at our Public Health and Social Services Program, to which you've allocated thirteen and a half million dollars. As, has happened since we began this process, our Financial Stimulus Review Team continues to meet every Thursday morning at ten o'clock. These are open meetings, and to keep an open and transparent process, they're on Zoom, they're live-streamed on YouTube and Facebook, so that the public can see what is happening at this point with that, with that committee. We're in the final stages before we begin to actually look at applications. The committee has developed a ten-point scoring matrix based on the priorities that you established when we had the joint meeting about three weeks ago. That matrix looks at the things that you told them to prioritize, that were serving the disadvantaged and at-risk populations, that the programs are specific to Sedgwick County, that they're sustainable if they're going to extend into next year. We're prioritizing PPE and cleaning supplies. So any agency that has yet to submit an application, I'm gonna remind right now that that application portal will close at midnight on Sunday, September twentieth, 2020. We encourage any public health or social service agency to, to make application. The numbers that you heard last week haven't changed a lot, we still have received about eighty applications. We've had a bit of a change in the underlying nature of those, we had some that were for-profit businesses, we redirected them to the Safe Operating Grant Program, we have received some additional ones. So at this point, we've got about twenty-six million dollars in total asks, and our Financial Stimulus Review Team will meet in this room and on Zoom next Wednesday, nine-twenty-three at noon, and they will begin to review these applications in detail and begin to make award recommendations that we'll be bringing back to you on October seventh for your approval. The second item is our Safe Operating Grant Program, for which five million dollars was allocated for these five thousand dollar grants to small business that was disrupted due to COVID. A reminder to everybody that the application deadline there did close this past Friday on September eleventh. We've received approximately four hundred to four hundred and fifty applications that appear to be eligible for funding. We're vetting those as be, before we bring those to you for approval. One of the things that we have experienced throughout this process is alterations or changes in our guidance. And to that end, when this program started and we opened that application portal, we were advised that a business that told us they had disruption due to COVID would be eligible. We opened the portal, and about a week before it closed, we get a additional guidance that says, the businesses need to tell us how they were affected by COVID. So we have a team of folks, our budget team is reaching out to all the applicants at this point to say, how were you affected? They're providing that narrative back to us, we're making sure that we have appropriate documentation to prove they were in business on March first, that they have had this COVID-related disruption, and so forth, so that we can move forward with processing those applications. We, our plan is to bring some to you next week for approval, and get those begun moving through the process and money out the door. As part of that process, you've been, you've received this morning a grant agreement that the businesses that will be receiving the five thousand dollar grants will be required to sign. So we're asking this morning for you to approve that agreement. If you have any questions, Mike Fessinger with the County Counselor's Office drafted the agreement, and he's here to, to deal with specific questions about it. But if you can approve that today, we will get that into the system so that we can do electronic signatures and just move through that process in a matter of minutes, as opposed to a matter of days, and speed that up for our applicants. So at this time, I guess I would pause to see if you have any questions about that agreement, and if not, then I would recommend approval of it.
So this would be the item two, that we need to make a motion to approve the agreement for these applicants-
Correct.
To sign. I don't have any questions about it, does anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll, I'll move to approve this agreement as, as formed. Yes, Commissioner Cruz?
I don't see listed in here where a small business who is not in compliance with our health orders, that they would not be eligible or have to repay back. Can, can we discuss that for a second?
Sure. Good question, Commissioner.
Morning, Commissioner Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Cruz, you're correct that there's not a provision in there that specifically addresses that situation, but with seven days' notice, we do have the ability to terminate the agreement and clawback any unspent funds. So if you were to make that decision based on that or any criteria, you have that freedom under this agreement to do that. So your situation that you outlined is not specifically outlined, but you have wide latitude to do what you wish and end this agreement early, for that or any other reason.
So I would like to consider adding that in here, that if we have applicants that aren't in compliance with the health orders that have been set, I, I would like to, I would like to consider adding that to this.
Okay. Okay, anybody else got, Lindsey?
Yes.
Sorry, Lindsey Povisso, your CFO. So the only comment I would make is actually a point that our audit firm brought up to us last night, and so far, our practice has been not to impose any additional requirements beyond what the Treasury or Treasury OIG or Uniform Guidance requires. And so that was just a consideration that they had put out there for us, that so far in all of our programs, that has been our practice. And so that's just a policy consideration for you all, certainly, you're welcome to do whatever you want, but that had been kind of the standard that we had been operating off of to this point. So that would be an additional layer of requirement beyond what the federal folks are requiring for the CARES use of funding.
Okay, but Lindsey, also, Whit O'Brien didn't, in our, recalling our earlier discussions about all of this, that it's, we can do CARES disbursement based on the, the world that we live in regionally-
Absolutely.
And county-wise.
Yes, we can choose to do that, I just want to make sure that it's under, that that policy consideration is out there, because so far, we have just tried to comply strictly with that.
Would we be, excuse me, sorry.
I'm just, to clarify then, I, I think that, so Commissioner Cruz's suggestion would be in writing on the agreement, and your option B would be, we would have to bring something up on an individual case and cancel the, and do clawbacks and everything else. I'm not sure what the will of the commission will be, but, but it does have some logic around it, based on the fact that, and, and these orders, you know, have been changing and, and probably will change in the, continued through this short period, but-
Right, yeah, the, the agreement in its current form is future-proofed, if you will, that we can, as guidance changes, we can, we can exercise autonomy and terminate the agreement early on a case-by-case basis, if the circumstance that Commissioner Cruz laid out arises, or if another circumstance arises that, you know, that this board would deem appropriate to, to go ahead and at least terminate one or more agreements. But there, I also, at least from a legal standpoint, I mean, I understand what, what, what Lindsey has laid out, and I, I concur with her that, you know, we ought to go ahead and listen to our, you know, consultants when, you know, when they're advising us, but at least from a legal standpoint, I don't have an issue with adding in a specific provision saying to like, you know, look, if you're out of compliance with local health orders, then you're ineligible for this grant. But again, you have the autonomy to, to make that decision, even if it's not in writing in the contract, so I'll leave that decision with you.
Okay. All right. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Cruz, sorry, I didn't mean-
So if it's not written in the contract, it's just an interpretation that we can come back seven days and make this determination. But if it's written in the contract, then people know that it's something they have to abide by. I mean, this, these CARES funds are to combat the coronavirus, and so if we have health measures in place that are designed to do just that, but we have those who violate these health orders, I, I guess I just have kind of some concerns around giving funds that are designed to combat the coronavirus to those who are violating orders designed to combat coronavirus. So I would like to, I, I, do I have to make a motion to add some language in to this contract that states that?
I think that would be appropriate, be it basically a sentence, is that right?
Correct, uh, yeah.
Added, so we could approve, her motion could be to approve this as presented with the addition of compliance with local health orders, basically?
Yes, yeah, that would, yeah, that would work for me.
Okay. Michael? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we add a sentence into our contract for the grant agreement for Sedgwick County Small Business Grant Program, that in order to receive the grant award, applicants must comply with our health, what is it? Health orders.
Local health order.
Our, our local health orders.
Correct. Okay, been a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Are you suggesting then that, as a matter of approval, that verification of their compliance is, is a step that must be checked off before they can receive funds?
I believe so, yes.
So we're gonna add another step to the approval of these four hundred and fifty businesses, that we have to, actually have to have someone go out and verify? And again, I think that one of the challenges we have is, you know, compliance is a-
No, we're not gonna go out and verify, they, they're signing off.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I asked my question specifically.
Well, we have, they're, they're signing that they are going to, that they are going to comply.
So there's an assumption on our part that they're gonna comply, and we're not gonna verify it?
Well, I, I think if there's a ticket issued in, I mean, we have, I mean, there are things that have been happening over the past weekend, and in subsequent weekends to come, that we could just look up and see.
Okay, so, I'm trying to be objective here. There are, there are businesses out there that may have posted policies, they may have some compliance, but maybe there are some employees that don't wear masks all the time. There are, there are violations of, of those orders that happen. If someone brings an accusation against a business that says, I saw someone not wearing a mask, for example, is that gonna be investigated and potentially put their, their, the grant at risk? To me, this is a slippery slope. I think that, that our goal right now is to get the money out to the community that needs it, and I think that we have other enforcement options available to us, we don't need to, we don't need to, we don't need to create confusion and, and complicate this, which is what I think is going to do. I mean, you're, we're suggesting this is a carrot for compliance. The reality is, there's gonna be accusations that are gonna fly against businesses then, that we're gonna have to go spend time investigating. You're saying there's an assumption that they're complying, because they said they are, but if we find any evidence whatsoever that they're not, we have to investigate them and potentially put their, their, their grant funds at risk. It's a very slippery slope. I, I don't think it's necessary, I think it slows us down. Our goal is to get the money out to these businesses that need help, and anything we can do to expedite that, make it quick, is, is our, is our mission. And to slow this down and put those, put those grant dollars at risk is, is going in the wrong direction.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, anybody, any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
So you will add that, and, and then this form will be ready to go, and still meet the timeline that we're under. Perfect, thank you. Brent, did we have a, was the item you gave us before this, was that a receive and file, or are you at the end of that?
Got two more items, and then the whole thing would be receive and file.
Thank you for clarifying, thank you, okay.
So the third program that we would bring you up to date on is the Workforce Development Program. That's the one point three million dollar allocation for training that was identified as one of the, the priority needs from our business community. We've received some proposals from educational institutions and from some businesses and age, organizations in the community. We have a working session tomorrow with our consultant, Whit O'Brien's, to look through these and determine eligibility of specific aspects of the proposals. After the initial submission, and they, they brought back their, their submission of their proposals, we've had follow-up questions, so now we've got a lot of clarification as to what these different programs look like. We're gonna take a hard look and a deep dive at those. Our goal is to bring back some recommendations next week in terms of some ideas or items for you to fund in workforce development. And then the fourth item is our PPE kit distribution. Because we've seen some delays and some back orders on some of the disinfectant cleaning, this, the actual distribution, this is not gonna occur until about October twelfth, so we are, everything else, we're, we're doing well on our timelines, but this one may be I set too optimistic of a goal for a timeline. But our distribution network is established throughout the county with small cities, with small city chambers and so forth, that will help us distribute this, these PPE kits, and we'll have drive-through distribution at the arena. We should be able to have everything out of the arena in time for their scheduled event that they have later in October. So at this time, if there are no questions, I would ask that you receive and file the report.
Okay. I don't see any questions, I appreciate these updates a lot, Brent, it helps us all, so I don't see any other questions, I'll make a motion to receive and file the report. Been motion and a second, any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, the next part is Lindsey.
Yes, hello again, Commissioners, Lindsey Povisso, your CFO. So the first item of two that I will talk with you about is a request that I passed along in email on Monday, and that is related to the District Court. So we know that when you all approved the spending plan originally back on July eighth- spending plan originally back on July 8th, we had quite a bit of funding set aside for county needs. A big portion of that was related to District Court operations, $6 million. And so part of that allocation would be consumed today to install this technology in the 24 courtrooms that are in use by our 18th Judicial, Judicial District Court. And that total dollar amount is $894,750. And there was a bid process that was done. The, the District Court was able to identify specific needs that they would have. And so they actually put out a bid spec form. We received, or to nine vendors, we received back multiple responses. This recommendation today is the result of the lowest responsive bid. And so it allows the 18th Judicial District Court to comply with a series of orders that the Kansas Supreme Court put out with regard to safe operations of courts and also allowing those to be processed fairly quickly. So there are various degrees of technology that are being implemented depending on whether it's in this building or in juvenile. But what it does is it enables audio and video work, all of the electrical installation and all of that. So a hefty price tag, but at the time it was approved to go out to bid, the estimates were that it would be roughly $975,000. So certainly, this is lower than what was anticipated. So we, as a financial assistance team, we're comfortable with approving this to move forward in the process. The county manager has approved it to move forward to you. If you all approve this today, then we would get that process started so that work can be completed by 12:30, which of course, we all know is the CARES deadline that's been emblazoned in our brains.
Brett? Okay.
So with that, I recommend the commission approve the procurement.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, Lindsay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Lindsay. So just for clarification, you set aside $6 million for District Court 18?
Correct. And that would include everything in that process.
Okay, including this.
Yes.
So we have already taken action before to allocate $6 million for the 18th Judicial District?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. That being said, I'll make a motion to approve as requested.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. All right.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioners. So now we'll talk about our COVID spending update. So last week when we visited, we were at $14.9 million in total COVID spending. We are now up to $24.2 million since last Wednesday. And so we'll talk quickly through what that includes. So first of all, on the non-CARES COVID spending side, so out of the County's General Fund and the Fire District General Fund, each of those has gone up slightly, but we're talking total cumulatively less than $500. So the bulk of where this expense has occurred then, of course, is on the CARES side. So we'll talk about first, the county's direct allocation of $99.6 million. So last week, we were at $10.4 million. This week, we were at 10, or I'm sorry, $19,690,273. Of that, $11.3 million is on the county's direct needs, and that is up $920,000 from last week. The bulk of that is for an increase in financial professional services. So as we've talked about, there is a lot of work that comes along with standing up these programs. We have a fantastic staff that is spending lots and lots of hours making these things happen, but unfortunately, we still need some help. And so we've expanded our contract with BKD to provide some additional assistance on some of the newer reporting requirements that came out on September 2nd that actually have to be in place for September 21st and then on ongoing basis from there. So we did increase a significant portion of funding for that support. We also increased the contract for temporary staffing. So Sheena has visited with you about the capacity issue of being able to hire all of the many positions that are needed by the Health Department. And so we have farmed a lot of that out to temporary staffing agencies. And so that contract increased $500,000 from last week to this week. That is no impact to your spending plan because we're simply reallocating the funding that you all had approved for the positions to this contractual assignment. And then on a much smaller level, we have had increases for technology, $30,000 for things like radios for correction staff who are out in the field and need to be able to communicate, and also for laptops for students who are in correctional care, who are having to do remote school if they're in quarantine or isolation. And then $17,000 for custodial supplies, and finally, another $23,000 for medical supplies like masks, tear-away gowns, hoods, and head covers for our public safety folks. So then the biggest increase has happened in the direct CARES allocation that we have that goes to external partners. So as we reported last week, we were well underway to getting payments out to schools and cities. And so we have, since last week, put out $8,368,105. 3.5 million of that has gone to schools. Again, they received a 100% advance. All 13 schools that applied have received their funding. There are a total of 15 eligible. Two did not make application for the funding. And then for cities, they received 50% of their advance. $4,873,000 has gone out to them. 14 of 17 cities that applied have received funding. Three are working through their city council processes to get it to us. Two eligible cities have not applied. One has told us they're just simply not interested in the other. We have not yet been able to communicate with. So we started with $99,636,917. We have spent $19,690,273. That leaves us with $79,946,644 remaining. Moving to Spark spending, again, the state of Kansas awarded us $9.3 million of their CARES allocation that has all been dedicated to those business support opportunities that Brett mentioned before. We, in that category, are up to spending $2,899,935. That's up $102,000 from last week, and that is all on PPE kit support. So the final update I'll give you is on the CARES HAVA side, so the Help America Vote Act money that the Election Office received from the Secretary of State's office. They have a total allocation of $420,000. Their spending is actually at $240,495. And if you were taking notes last week, you'll notice that actually went down. How does that go down? Well, there had been an order in to do a high-speed ballot scanner. That product cannot be received. And so that purchase order has been canceled. And so that removed about $60,000 worth of costs from their total spending. So that is the information I have for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file.
Okay. Thanks for this, for the update. Okay, I don't see any questions. Therefore, I'll, I'll make a motion to receive and file the report as presented.
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Lindsay. Oh, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it would be appropriate, I would like to bring up an off-agenda item regarding our Public Health Officer's order.
Okay. Been a motion to do an off-agenda item?
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Commissioner, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is something that you and I talked about yesterday, but I'd like to bring to the rest of the commission. Obviously, we have all been inundated with emails regarding the, the curfews that restaurants, bars, and nightclubs have been put under. We've also been inundated by a whole lot of emails about masks, both pro and con. We talk to people every single day about that. What we're seeing in the community is a lot of positive trends right now with the infection rate. I mean, I was reading the Wichita Eagle that, you know, we, we were at 6.1 over the weekend, and then I believe yesterday, we were down to 5.9, which is pretty, pretty extraordinary. So something's working. It's, it's a combination of stuff, social distancing, hand washing, some curfews, capacity issues, mask. There, there's no one thing that, that's causing this to work, but I think we all have the same goal, and that's to get businesses open and to get schools back fully operational and get kids in the classroom full-time. So talking with Commissioner Meitzner yesterday, we were talking about maybe an incremental approach that we would make a motion to send to Dr. Gerrold Menz, our Public Health Officer, that we would move the current curfew for restaurants, bars, nightclubs, places that sell alcohol from 11:00 PM until midnight, because we are hearing their concerns, their legitimate concerns about their business. I think this is a common sense, small incremental approach, shows the public we're listening to them, and it also is going to reward people because we are doing some things correctly. The five of us disagree on how to, how to move forward on everything, but I think we all understand that if the infection rate continues to go down, we can start opening businesses back up, very little approach. So that's going to be my motion, and it'll be a recommendation to Dr. Menz. So ultimately, this is his order. Dr. Menz will make his judgment on that, and that'll be my motion to make a recommendation to him that restaurants, bars, nightclubs, places that sell liquor currently are in an 11 o'clock curfew down to midnight. So.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then been a motion in a second. Comments, questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Curiously, Commissioner O'Donnell, why not just make a motion to change it rather than make a recommendation to Dr. Menz?
Because this is still Dr. Menz's order, Commissioner Howell. I know you brought up last week about us affirming or, or whatever, but this is still Dr. Menz's order. And at the end of the day, he is our Public Health Officer, and so I do defer, he, he knows a lot more about epidemiology and these issues than I do. But I also know that he's been very reasonable and responsive to us when we've brought him issues. And I want to show him that, that, and the public, that we're all going to act in good faith and just move things ahead, move things forward. I think that, that in the next meeting we have, I would like to have a motion that we recommend that he takes away the curfew at all, but we have to make sure there's not a big spike. We're just, you know, we're not even two weeks out from Labor Day. So, but we haven't seen a big spike from Labor Day. And Commissioner Meitzner was pointing out to me even just this morning that our surrounding counties are moving in the wrong direction, not all of them, many of them, and we're moving in the right direction. So I would like to see an incremental approach, and I want to work with Dr. Menz. Instead of telling him what to do, I do want to talk to him about it. And if he says no, then at our next meeting, I would like to, to do this. But I feel like he's been pretty reasonable.
I'll just make a comment then. You know, I think that Dr. Menz ought to make recommendations to the Board of Health. We ought to be the ones that are adopting whatever order we think is appropriate for Sedgwick County. This is, we are the elected officials. He essentially works for us. If he wants to register an opinion or a recommendation, we ought to receive, we ought to receive that and process through that and make the order what we believe is best for Sedgwick County. I don't think we, I don't think we should defer this to, to, to Dr. Menz. I appreciate him. I know he has a heart for what's, what's good in this community, but ultimately, this needs to be, our elected officials need to own and, and, and own and make the, make the order from, from our perspective rather than hand it over to an elected official. No offense to him. He's a, a great guy, but this is our, this is our responsibility, in my opinion. I will support the motion, I guess. It seems like it's moving the ball in the right direction, although I'm very disturbed with the fact that we are giving over our authority to Dr. Menz, and I don't think it goes far enough. I think these businesses have been, essentially been unable to, to prosper in any way for over six and a half months now. And I think it's time for us to understand, this is not a week or two, this is not for, until October 21st. This is a, a long-term strategy that we're continuing to, to get involved in the economic decisions of our businesses. We need to back off entirely, and I would, I guess I'll support this, but I, I think it doesn't go nearly far enough.
I agree. I, the, the purpose of this motion is to come up with a compromise and continue to move in the, in the right direction. Because to me, getting kids in the classroom and getting businesses open is the way to go. We're, we need to show the business community that we're going to be good partners, but also be responsible. And what Dr. Menz and what we're dealing with is some that every county in the state of Kansas, I don't know what other states do, but I know that there, there's this struggle that every county is going through, what you mentioned earlier about who, who needs to handle these. But truly, Dr. Menz, the only way, we would have to fire him if, if he didn't want to comply to that. And, and I think he's shown good faith to work with us. So we'll see where we are. And if he says no, then yeah, then Commissioner Meitzner, I would ask him to do a special meeting and, and talk about it. But I'm hoping he will.
Okay.
Go along with this.
Yep. And recall, we have a motion in a second. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I, I think that this, I, I have been impressed with how Dr. Menz has listened to, to all of us. In addition to making his recommendations, I am not a physician. His, his resume is very impressive, and I feel like when he makes these recommendations, I have to take them seriously. But that being said, I do want to listen to my constituents, and I want to make sure that I'm paying attention to what they say. Just recently, yesterday, we all received information about 12 new deaths that are being reported today, one 38-year-old, which is alarming. And when you think about, you know, I, I know that some people are going to say this is fear-mongering, but what I'm saying, this is the reality of the situation that we're in. I mean, people are dying, people are being very, people are being admitted to the hospital, they're staying for long extended periods of time. And it's important for us to take small steps to getting back to normal so that we can ensure that the majority of the people in our community are safe. So I'm, I'm happy to support this. I, I would like to get everything back open. I, I want to open everything back up. But I also hear our hospitals every single week tell us that the measures that we're taking and, and what we're doing is working. And so I have to commend the, the people of this city for doing everything that they can, and, and this county, because I really feel like, as you can see through the data, that these measures are working. So I, I just want to take a second to say thank you to this county for really taking this seriously.
Okay.
I'll make a, I'll, I'll make the formal motion.
Okay, to clarify.
Yeah.
You've made a motion.
Right. Well, no, I was reading what I was going to say, so it wasn't.
Right.
Just, just so it's very clear.
Okay, so.
For the clerk.
Yeah, Papoon, so he, my, Commissioner O'Donnell wants to, to read a formal motion. Yeah, I think that would be preferable, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Because otherwise, it was just rambling. Anyway, so just hold on, Commissioner Cruz.
Can I, can I make?
All right.
And can I make just one?
Yes, sir.
One other comment and on, on top of that. You know, there, I'm puzzled personally that, that our, our county, just to echo what Commissioner Cruz, is our numbers are somehow looking better and more consistent. We're 10 days out of Labor Day, we're second week of school, even some schools started before that. So I don't know exactly why Sedgwick County is doing well, other than that, that the businesses and the public are, are well aware, distancing, I don't know, masks, I hate the masks, but they are, things like that. And I'm just reminded that the public, our hospitals, we're a regional hospital center. On our calls on Mondays, you know, they, they say how many are in the ICUs, and, and that's holding steady, you've got capacity. But any given week, 20 to 25% of the ICU patients are from outside Sedgwick County. We've got our major employers, Spirit and others, we've got employees coming from outside Sedgwick County, we've got schoolchildren that, that cross borders between Sedgwick County. And so we are a regional deal. The other counties around us, as, as shown this morning, are in different colors of, of danger, and, and ours is not. So I'm just echoing that, that it's, I don't know what, I wish there was one reason we could say, it's because of this is why we're doing good. But the science isn't quite there yet to, to explain it. So I think this is a, a great move to say, all right, restaurants and bars, please, you know, you're back in business and, but you're, now let's go to midnight, and let's see if we can continue as a community to, to, to fight this together. So I, I will support your motion as you formally read.
Yeah, but thank you, Chairman. And I mean, it was just as much your motion too, based on our conversation yesterday. So I move that the Board of Health recommend to Dr., or the County Commission, recommend to Dr. Menz that he amend his order dated September 14, 2020, to allow restaurants, bars, nightclubs, and other businesses licensed to sell alcohol for on-premise consumption to remain open until midnight.
Second.
Much cleaner.
In a second.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we go to the next item. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, reconsideration of Item 2 on the minutes of August 13, 2020, meaning of the board of bids and contracts for EA tandem axle dump trucks equipped with salt, sand spreader, and liquid anti-icing and de-icing system, Public Works.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning, Joe.
Good to be here with you.
Is this a new item?
Kind of. This item was recently deferred from last week, reconsideration of the tandem axle dump trucks, as was mentioned, equipped with the salt, sand spreader, and liquid ice, anti-icing and de-icing system. And the recommendation for today's meeting is to accept the proposal from Truck Center Companies, Proposal Number 1, that's Master Tech, and that will be for three dump trucks, and that's in the total amount of $597,024. And then we'd like to establish contract pricing for Option 1 and the non-warranty items, and this will be for a period of three years. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. First of all, our agenda item says four, so I want to make sure that it's corrected to say three, but besides that, I've had a long discussion with Jim Weber, our Director of Public Works. He assures me that three dump trucks and retaining one of the other dump trucks meets his mission needs, and that was my question that I had last time, that I wanted to assure that we were able to support what his goal was. He assures me that three tandem dump trucks and retaining one meets that requirement. So I moved that we accept the boards and bids and contracts for three new tandem axle dump trucks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here. I'll say it again, we don't have enough dump trucks in our fleet to dispatch vehicles consistently to what is needed year-round. We have a shortage. In fact, we have a dispatch rate of 70% or such, 79%, and if you do the math, we don't have enough dump trucks. I'm not suggesting we add to the fleet, but I am suggesting we don't sell off trucks that have life left in them, and I think our plan to retain a vehicle is a step in the right direction, but it's not enough. We have four vehicles available to us that we could enter into, if you will, a bit of a study to find out how long these trucks will last. Keeping one truck's not going to answer that question. And I have asked that we would work with CFO to develop a budget line item to manage the cost of these trucks separately from the rest of the fleet. I think that we just need to have a vision to do this. We're not going to capture the data we need to answer this question in the future with a single truck. And so I'm not against buying four trucks. I think that was our initial proposal two meetings ago. I think buying four trucks is probably the right step, so again, buying three today is not enough, but retaining four trucks would actually get us a lot closer to our dispatch requirements of Sedgwick County. So as it is right now, this is not a solution. I think we need to go back to the drawing board, we need to have a better plan on how to use these vehicles to get information long-term, and as it is right now, to buy three and to retain one is just not the right answer. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion and a second. I think we're also on a timeline, time-sensitive item to purchase, so any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Penny. Thank you, Jim. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items H through K.
There is, I'll make a motion to approve items H through K. There's a motion and a second. Any questions about any of the items? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, County Counselor. I've been, there won't be much on this item. I've been working with Hakeem Ashford to get ready for the session. I know that he has sent out requests to various departments for legislative issues that might be suggested for this coming platform. I think the Commission also probably needs to consider the fact that due to the interruption in last year's session, that our platform may look very much the same as it did last year because we really didn't get to complete that process. But if there's some additional ideas that Commissioners have or county departments have that need urgent attention as well, we may want to consider adding that, but this platform process may go a little quicker than some of the years past, so.
Well, thanks for the heads up. The only thing that comes to my mind is some kind of urgency to support Mark Bennett with the speedy trial legislation. I know it may not happen right this minute, but unless there's objections from others, I'd like to maybe even get with Johnson County and others and do a cooperative support on the speedy trial legislation, but that's.
Maybe call Jason.
Jason, yeah, see what the lay of the land is. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the legislative agenda? Okay, thank you, Mike, for your report.
You're welcome.
And also thank you, Tom, for sharing the, our federal legislative updates that we get from our federal person. Who else was helpful on the North Junction? He wants to take credit for all of it, but I don't think, no, I'm kidding.
He did a great job.
He did a great job. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Do the Commissioners have any other? Okay. Oh, did you have something on others?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. I'm looking forward to public comment here in just a moment. I just wanted to remind the listeners that we are going to have a recognition of veterans at the Derby North Middle School parking lot out by Rock Road. We're going to dedicate a couple of signs and a portion of Rock Road from Derby City limits to Wichita City limits on Rock Road. This will occur on October 3 at 10:00 AM. If anybody has questions on that, please contact my office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Howell. You've done a lot of good work on that, getting that done. Okay, before we hand it over to Commissioner Cruz for executive session, for the public to know, we have a couple of executive sessions that will probably run a total of about 30 minutes, and when we come back from executive sessions, we will take about a five or seven-minute recess to assure that we have the connectivity going on with the Zoom calls for the next portion of the meeting. And so if people want to set their clocks, it'll probably be sometime right after 11:30 or so, we'll go to the public agenda. So, Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I would prefer, the Commissioner's going to be involved in this, whether we do public comment before or after executive session. Is there a compelling reason why we can't change the order and do public comment before executive session, so the 50-plus people at the extension office don't have to wait for us for 30 minutes to get through our executive session? I'd rather see us do public comment first.
Well, the agenda is set the way it is. I would rather, oh, commit.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I will remind the board, I think that it's important that we do the executive session during our telecast with KPTS, because I think the public needs to know when we're going into session and out of session and under what circumstances, and not do that after the broadcast period, to comply with some of the Attorney General's processes and procedures, so.
Okay.
I would make that recommendation.
Thanks for clarifying. The will of the Commission is to go to executive session. Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes until 11:13 for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel relating to the performance evaluation of a management-level county employee, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to a live broadcast from executive session at 11:13.
Second.
Been a motion and a second for executive session. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, we'll adjourn for executive session. Please eliminate the media for a few minutes.
Well, Mike.
Mike Papoo, not Hot Mike. Okay. Welcome back. We've returned from the executive session. No action was taken. And we will go to the next item. Commissioner Cruz.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes and Oh, sorry. To 20? Oh, excuse me, sorry. For 20 minutes until 11... 25, right?
35.
No, 35, excuse me. Until 11:35 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship in order to discuss potential litigation, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to a live broadcast from executive session at 11:35.
Second. Motion is second. Commissioner Dennis, second. Okay. Any other questions being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye.
Okay. We will adjour-- recess to executive session.
Okay, so we will recess to assure the media connectivity. We will officially start, let's say, at 11:45.
I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman. So if we're recessed, will these comments make it into the minutes? Are we able to, I mean, is this actually part of our official meeting?
Yes, sir.
The public comments will continue to be part of our official meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we will recess and we will reconvene here in about six, seven minutes. So, thank you. And so the three minutes or whatever up, and then Tanya will say, are there any questions? And if any of us have questions, we can do that at that time. And then, and then Tanya will say, okay, there's no further questions. Next speaker, please.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Tanya, you can hear, okay, we are back from recess. Okay, we're not back.
Can you hear us on your end? Okay, there, Alex?
Yeah, you sound good to us. And I think as long as the commissioners speak into them next, we should be able to hear them just fine as well.
Chairman, are we ready now?
We're ready.
Yes. Okay. Tanya? Okay, we are good. Okay, welcome. We are back from our brief recess. We're back from recess. And so we will start the public agenda. Don't want to be too repetitive because I don't know what was on KTPS or not. But Tanya Cole, the Assistant County Manager, will be, will be conducting the order, the orderly process of this. We are on Zoom. We have Zoom in this commission meeting where there's, at this point, two of us present. And I think three, Commissioner Cruz is present in the meeting. And Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner O'Donnell are at their desk, which is right around the corner. And my office is on. There's a blank chair there. That's my office because if I have to come back and forth to get something. So again, it's three minutes. And at the end of each, at the end of each citizens addressing us, Tanya will ask if there's any comments or questions from the commission. And there could be some. And if, if not, then that person will be excused and it'll be the next speaker, please. So we do remind that we have 52 people signed up to talk. I don't know if all 52 are there or not. We have an order in front of us. And so with that, I don't think there's any other housekeeping to address. So we will hand it over to you, Tanya. Thank you for helping coordinate this. And thank you, citizens, for being patient with us.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and get started. We did have movement on the schedule to accommodate schedule for the speakers. So our first speaker up this morning is Mr. Scott Sexton. He was originally on the schedule as number 45, but he will be number one. And I do have my phone here, and I will go ahead and start the timer for three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come back here and speak. Actually, wrote up a speech today. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for giving me the time to speak. I came in last week unplanned, and you graciously gave me time to speak on veterans' problems in the community. When I asked the Board about what was, what we as a community can do to end suicide, I understandably got the answer that I hear the most. We have programs in place, and we all have, have been affected by suicide. Yet, suicide rates continue to climb. I truly know that this issue touches a few members of this Board of Commissioners closely with Commissioner Cruz's grandfather and her uncle, along with the combined 35 years of military service among Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis. Seeing how this board named last week Suicide Prevention Week and the month of September being Suicide Prevention Month nationwide, I want to bring you, bring to you a solution rather than a question. With the astronomical number of approximately, this is just ones that have been reported, 8,030 veterans, 288 police officers, and 103 firefighters that all took their lives just in the year 2019. I want to, okay. I want to introduce you to an amazing program called the Warrior Path Program, which has been highly successful and well-studied. And I've partnered with the creators of this program, Baldur Crest, to be able to bring it here. There is nothing like this in the state of Kansas. This program is based upon post-traumatic growth and ability to use our traumas as fuel to propel us to new horizons. It's an 18-month program that begins with a seven-day onsite inward look at themselves, which is very intense and emotional. After the seven days, the Warriors, the Warrior is sent home with tasks to complete with weekly check-ins and peer support for any needs they have. These peer supports are individuals that have survived their own traumas and have made it out the other side and can relate to what these veterans or first responders are going through. This is more relatable than sitting in a doctor's office with people who have only read about PTSD. More effective healing is done in many areas outside of a doctor's office. Forgotten 22 currently only consists of three very dedicated veterans that would give you their last dollar if you were hungry. So needless to say, we need more help. We need the county to stand up and say, we are with you. To make this happen, we need help finding a place to build the facility and continuing funds to keep it, keep it going. There are funds in the CARES program that are set aside for community and mental health organizations. Can we not, as a community? Can we not, as a community, decide to use these funds to better support these heroes that are facing an epidemic that has a lot higher death rate than COVID or any other disease in the past century? Please stand up and join me in showing that the county cares about our veterans, police officers, firefighters, and all first responders. They risk their life every day, and it's time that we do more to pay them back when they need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments? Thank you, and a thanks for last week addressing us, too. And good luck with your mission.
Hi, my name is Daniel Rivera. And first of all, I'd just like to start off with my disappointment in leadership that I've seen so far from a few individuals on the commission. Last week, we showed up at the courthouse. There was a group of us, about 15. And I feel like the door got slammed in our face based off of a substitute motion that was, that took place, and it was locked on us when there was the ability to have our voices heard last week. Was not impressed with that. Also, was not impressed with one of the individuals on the commission that yesterday was talking about showing kindness to individuals, yet that individual put on their Facebook page, the anti-mask emails are rolling in today, folks, and pretty much everything that came from that post was nothing but hate in our direction. So it's just a little bit of interesting leadership from what I've seen thus far. And it's been very difficult for us to just get our voices heard. And I'm glad that we are here today, and you will hear our voices today. You're not going to actually hear my voice. I went to teachers, and I asked teachers, how is this going? How are the mandates being managed in school? I talked to a college professor. She has three classes that are hybrid. She chose to go hybrid because she believes that the face-to-face is the only way to teach math. She had to pre-record all of her lectures 24 hours in advance. She has to post online what is going on every single day. She has to do handouts and worksheets as well as put answers online. Before the end of last semester, she had to inflate grades because she didn't feel it was fair to basically flunk individuals based off of the circumstances they were being dealt. Her instructional time is cut in half. It's difficult to hear when students ask questions, and they're more timid than ever. They aren't asking questions. They aren't asking questions. She's in a big auditorium, which she had to request because the college did not give her the opportunity to have a big auditorium. They gave her a small one when there were big ones available. She said, you can't see people's expressions. And that's how she reads confusion. And so she's not seeing the confused looks on her students that she needs to be able to see to be able to engage with them. The class is less interactive, less involved. They come sit and they're very quiet. While she walks on campus, she has to wear a mask even outside. And she says it's about 10% of people that are typically on campus are on campus. She said, when I try to take a deep breath and relax, I can't because I got a mask in the way. She grew up in communism for 20 years and she said she's having flashbacks to that type of environment. They did put masks on every statue on this campus and they actually have some signs that say, I wear a mask because my mom has autoimmune disease. So my mom feels comfortable sending me to school. This is the kind of signage that we have going on at our local universities. I have another teacher here. Actually, I'm going to, I got a lot, I got a lot and I don't have a lot of time because that was also taken away from me, I believe. Two minutes is, has been taken away. But I will say this, this is how, this is important. I would like to remain anonymous as I do feel a ton of pressure to have a certain viewpoint as an educator. This is not exactly a topic that's been open for discussion in my district. As she's a school administrator, or this individual is, I'm not sure if it's a she. She said, as far as the students wearing the mask, we haven't had any real issues. We're only on day three of all our students. But we give them lots of breaks throughout the day, going outside for P E. Okay, so I'll wrap up with this because my time is up. And I can send you guys my testimonials, which I will do. But I want to wrap up with this. Jonathan C. Maxwell, I was watching this yesterday. He said, every opportunity is disguised by difficulty. That's why so many times we don't see the opportunity because all we see is the adversity. But inside of that is opportunity. And the opportunity that you have as a governing body in front of you is to either step up boldly, courageously, confidently, and end the mandates, or the mandates end us. They kill our schools, they kill our business. And that is a decision that you get to make as a governing body. And I encourage you to make the bold one and move forward in a direction that says, we are going to stand up for this thing and we're going to move our community forward. We need someone to do it because everyone's passing the ball back and forth. No one wants to take responsibility. We need to take responsibility on this thing. We need to move forward based off of what real science says. Thank you for your time. Oh, do you have questions?
I don't see any questions. Thank you.
I'm Scott Pierce. Some weeks ago, I submitted to each of you an access to 41 mask trials with meta-analysis on varied material, including surgical masks, cloth masks, and others. The variance in ability to filter any aerosolized micro particles of viral bodies is negligible in the meta-analysis of those trials. Recent trials show a statistical increase in antibiotic pulmonary infections and for logic reasons. We are rebreathing what we should be exhaling into God's thin air. The mandates and executive health orders are fueled by the preface of two words, it's just. It's just until we flatten the curve. It's just until we do not overwhelm the hospitals or ICUs. It's just until the end of the month. It's just until the middle of next month. It's just until there's a vaccine. A vaccine that's being made with reckless abandon and utilization of toxic substances included aborted fetal cells, MRC-5, that are not undergoing a process called apoptosis. And science calls that cancer. It's just a PCR test, a swab inserted deep into your nasal cavity that the inventor clearly states in his literature that PCR by design is not to be used as a diagnostic tool. It's designed instead as to use to replicate DNA fragment sequences. A DNA primer used in the current PCR test that we're testing COVID-19 for have a DNA sequence that matches the primer in the PCR test. And so healthy individuals are coming up positive and ultimately are healthy as a horse. SARS-CoV-19 is not novel. It's not a monster. It's an RNA core wrapped in layers of glycolipid proteins with an S protein rendering it possible to get into human cells. But COVID-19 is amongst 360,000 known viruses that can infect mammals. We know, we know at this point its lifespan. We know at this point its pathophysiology. We know that indeed it is an opportunist. We know that statistically it loves immunosuppression and comorbidities like hypertension, type 2 diabetes, and obesity, which are, which are statistically at the top of the poll. These patients have a higher vulnerability because they have particular proteins like CD147 and CD29, doorknobs, if you will, into the cells. We know that this virus has an affinity for attacking the one beta chain on the FE2 and FET, FE3 heme, one of four hemes comprising your hemoglobin, kicking off the iron radical and now debunking the hemoglobin's ability to disseminate oxygen. We know immunosuppression is a critical component to infection or not. And yet we have a local health officer that sits in your chambers and makes statements that we do not know and executes mandates like the one that we're under now imposing on our freedoms and our liberties of being mandated to not go out into public without a mask. And yet the extension of the mask, even with the extension of the mask mandates, death rates are lower than the seasonal flu. Worldwide and up to, including our local component cases, continue to ebb and flow and the progression from asymptomatic disease to mild to moderate and progression to late-stage disease are almost negligible if in good health. One might deduce and predict that the virus has mutated and will likely mutate over several times because that's what viruses do. And our silly-nilly mandates and rules that we try to build around this are just insanity. As if it knows the difference of whether we're walking across the room or that it's 11 o'clock. And I will close with this. This is not the America I grew up in. This is not the America that I want to live in. And this is certainly not the Wichita-Sedgway County that I boast about to others of why I choose to live here. I'm not going to be silenced by a mask mandate that fails to execute common sense and instead uses the capacity of an invisible foe to undermine and destroy our democracy. Ladies and gentlemen, you're getting it wrong. I pledge allegiance for liberty and for justice for all, or not. I'm asking that you repeal this mandate and at minimum change the language and make sure that it says voluntary versus mandate and that we are allowed to live like God designed us to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. There's a question from Commissioner Howell.
First of all, Scott, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, great. I understand you were here last week as well. I want to say thank you for your persistence. I think you're very, very intelligent. You are very articulate. In fact, I would like to get a copy of your testimony today. Is this written out that we could get a copy?
Yes.
All right. Please send that to me. I appreciate you very much and I agree with your perspective today. Thank you so much.
And because of the, and because of the change in time, I had, I had abbreviated the overall notes and condensed this into a three-minute window, which was narrow and possible.
Well, thank you again.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, sir. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Melton. I am in Wichita, Kansas. Please forgive me for reading. I am terrified and I only have three minutes, so no time to breathe. First, I want to say thank you. I respect your position and I truly believe that you're trying to do the best that you can. I invite you to consider the ripple effect that is happening in day-to-day life with decisions that are being made here. Restrictions of six feet and masks are what you start with, but finding creative ways to continue life while complying with the rules set by our governing officials have become the number one focus for businesses, schools, and hospitals. This sets a precedence for the next virus that history tells us will come. I ask, what is your end game? Is it vaccines? Smallpox is one of only two infectious vaccines diseases to be, I'm sorry, infectious diseases to be eradicated. So far, the only infectious disease of humans to be eradicated by deliberate intervention. It became the first disease for which there was an effective vaccine in 1798. The last naturally occurring case of smallpox was diagnosed in 1977, 179 years after an effective vaccine was produced. Assuming an effective vaccine is created at the very first strike of this global virus, are you planning to keep these restrictions for another 179 years? What about the next virus? What precedent of mandates and procedures are you creating today that will affect us when the next one hits? I invite you to think through the ripple effect of the lack of help choice that's happening right now beyond the mask in an effort to comply. Examples, I'm related to a teacher that actually has to take lunches from her students and throw them away because they ran out of time to eat. In an effort to honor restrictions, the school has chosen to have school lunches in the classroom. Students that brought their lunch from home are able to begin eating immediately. However, students that rely on school lunches are required to line up with the teacher, walk down the hall to the cafeteria, wait in line at a six-feet distance, collect their food, wait for all the other students to come back into line, walk with their teacher, back to the class, then sit down to eat. More often than not, students are running out of time, 15 minutes or less to get to eat their lunch. When time is at my family member, their teacher is required to throw their food away. Her heart breaks every time. Moreover, the trust this child has in their teacher is broken every single time. Malnourishment was not that student's help choice. My son underwent surgery recently. His wife was not allowed to go in the hospital at all. Post anesthesia, he was given instruction for at-home care. He was expected to remember all of the instructions along with writing paper. It was actually quite frustrating and confusing. Had he had an advocate there for him, questions and concerns could have been cleared up and it would have been much safer. My friend's son, under the age of two, recently went in for surgery. My friend was devastated to find out that any child that went in for surgery over the age of two would not be able to have a parent present in the hospital until they were to be released, not before or after the surgery. Can you imagine being five years old and having surgery and no one familiar there to comfort you or advocate for you? Rather, you're an adult or a child, having a medical advocate for you is a basic medical right. These are the ripple effects that are happening, happening beyond the restrictions that you make here in this office. Are we to live like this for the next 179 years to be sure that the virus is gone? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have someone from staff validate her comments regarding no family members at the hospitals, age two and above. That's a very alarming piece of information. If it's true, I would like to have someone confirm that with hospital policy. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't, I don't see any other questions. Just a reminder to Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner O'Donnell, if you have a question, I need to, you need to speak up or I need to see your hand because I'm reluctant. I forget to look up. So if you do have a comment, please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you.
If you have a comment, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Murphy and I thank you very much for taking the time to give us the opportunity to speak. Seventy-five years ago, Hermann Göring testified at the Luhmannberg Trials that he was asked, how did you make the German people go along with all of this? He said, it's an easy thing. It's not anything to do with Nazism. It has to do with human nature. You can do this as a Nazi regime. You can do it as a socialist regime. You can do it in a communist regime and you can do it in a monarchy or a democracy. The only thing that the government needs to make people into slaves is fear. All you have to do is figure out something to make them scared and you can get them to do anything you want. These masks, disposable medical masks are loose-fitting devices that were designed to be worn by medical personnel to protect accidental contamination of patient wounds and to protect the wearer against splashes or sprays of bodily fluids. There is limited evidence for their effectiveness in preventing influenza, COVID, and viruses effective, oh, sorry, transmission either when worn by an infected person or an uninfected person. To reduce the exposure, our systematic review felt no significant effect of face mask or transmission of laboratory confirmed influenza. This was by Miss Stein. This was a study that was supported by the WHO and by the Collaborative Research Fund. You were sent 42 different trials. This is one of them. Another study, 1,607 test subjects on cloth masks findings, the study of the RCT cloth mask and the results caution against the use of cloth masks. And the reason is because they retain moisture. They're reused. They're cloth masks and they have poor filtration and they actually result in more increased infection. If you read the trials that were sent to you, you will find all of that. If you have questions, I can send those to you as well. Now I want you to consider me. This makes it hard for me to breathe medically. This not only does that, but because I was a child of sexual assault, this affects me mentally. This is a reminder of having my mouth covered and not having my liberties and my rights. You guys are doing this to us out of fear. I want you to go to the KDH, oh, sorry, my notes are not coming up. The KDHE said that this time last year, we had 179 cases of influenza. We had 27% deaths, 1.5, oh, I'm sorry, 27 cases and 1.5 rate of death. Right now, unless it's in the nursing homes, we have 0.6 as a society. Please stop this madness. Adolf Hitler said, if you tell a big lie long enough and frequently enough, it will be believed. We don't believe the lies. We see what's happening. Please, one of you step up and free your citizens from this ridiculousness. We're trusting in you. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions? Would you like the trials?
No, I don't see any questions, but thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
Next speakers, please.
I'm Mike Tice. I'm a Sedgway County resident and registered voter. I'd like to start by saying I agree that the government has a duty to recommend interventions during a public health crisis. However, those interventions are only acceptable as long as they cause no harm or are the least harmful option. The problem with this emergency public health order is that you are not merely recommending a precaution that may or may not be effective. You are using force to make people submit to an order that could ultimately make individuals or entire populations thicker. Regardless of your feelings on masks, which I am not here to debate, it is wrong to order a medical mandate. The decision should be made between a doctor and a patient after full informed consent. And if any of you were to go to a doctor and would like to have a second opinion, you have the opportunity to do that, whereas you are not offering a second option. This order is causing emotional, psychological, and physical harm to Sedgway County residents. By including exemptions within the order, you are acknowledging and agreeing that this mandate carries risks. You're basing your decision on theory and consequential evidence and have not given a fair risk analysis for the population of Sedgway County. Even Dr. Min last Wednesday stated that we can only assume the mandate has had some impact on the county's downward trend. He also stated that all we have is circumstantial evidence. It is wrong for government officials to require masks when health officials and healthcare workers are divided on the issue. Studies on cloth masks especially do not prove to prevent viral transmission. Actually, they cite risks accompanying the wear of cloth masks. I have done my diligence to read your scientific articles and videos that you have provided to me to look at. I am asking you to make an effort to do the same in regards to risks. Please oppose this emergency public health order, recommend and encourage masks, but please do not order us to do so. You are choosing which lives to value over others and that is not acceptable for a governing body. Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Min, sir?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for coming. I, I met the speaker at her house the other day and it was great to meet you and talk to me about that. So thanks for coming. I told me to look for you today. You were right. You weren't applying. You were there. So good to see you again.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Stiles. And recently, a U.S. District Judge William Stigman is quoted to say, the liberties protected by the Constitution are not fair-weather freedoms, in place when times are good but able to be cast aside in times of trouble. There is no question that this country has faced and will face emergencies of every sort. But the solution to national crisis can never be permitted to supersede the commitment to individual liberty that stands as the foundation of the American experiment. The federal court has upheld the laws of this country do not provide for a governor to create his or her new normal. Rather, the law provides for three separate but equal branches of government who have sworn to uphold the Constitution. I listened to District Attorney Mark Bennett state his request to keep the mask mandate order in place last week because House Bill 2016 ties the Supreme Court's ability to manage dockets to the governor's order. The individuals of Sedgway County should not have to wear masks in order for the county to manipulate the system. I agree that something should be done to to manipulate the system. I agree that something should be done to address the speedy trial issue, but it should be put on the legislative agenda to repeal the speedy trial order, not manipulated through the mask mandate against individuals. It seems that the county is abusing their power. The original mandate was put in place because COVID-19 was foreign to the majority of people, and there was a concern that hospitals would be overwhelmed and hospitals would not be able to treat everyone. This has not been the case. This man-made virus has taken 69 lives in Sedgwick County since the beginning of the year. We lose approximately 100 lives a day due to motor vehicle accidents. Will we next mandate that we can't drive? When we talk about masks, we have to talk about microns. Typically, an N5 mask filters out 95% of particulate matter larger than .3 microns. The COVID-19 particle is about .1 micros. This is for the N95 masks. We aren't even addressing the homemade masks. When we consider this, the argument that masks saves lives is not a valid argument. Don't listen to me. Listen to the professionals. The World Health Organization has stated that it is hugely unlikely that a symptomatic individual can spread the virus. Professor of Medical, of Medicine at Stanford, Dr. Ben David, Nobel Prize winner chemistry, Dr. Michael Levitt, Dr. Allen Preston, Chief Wellness Officer at the Cleveland Clinic, Dr. Michael Rosen, Senator Scott Jensen, M.D., you have over 41 cases testifying that masks don't work. It's time for our officials to stop leading from a fearful place. It's time, sorry, it's time to stop, to stop following the fearful leaders and take a bold step forward to lead us with strength back to the healthy and strong community that we once were. Allow us the chance to revive our economy. The bottom line is, I don't want to wake up one day and realize we live in a dictatorship community. Please stop this nonsense. Stop trying to play God and be the bold leaders that you were elected to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to say hello to Shannon Stiles. I wanted to say I listen to your show on Saturday mornings, 8 o'clock. Successful living on KQAM. I want to say thank you for helping this community have more successful living, and I appreciate you appearing before the commission today. With respect to the state's emergency, emergency order declaration, I believe that's taken care of, I believe, until the next legislative session that can deal with a speedy issue, speedy trial issue at the legislature. So this is a state issue, as far as I know. Interestingly enough, the governor's order, executive order for emergency declaration, I don't think it actually includes a mask order aspect of it any longer. So the mask, the mask order is only a county issue at this point. We have total control over that as a commission. So those are just my comments, but thank you for coming to us today to, to make your case. Appreciate you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, and I don't see any other comments or questions. Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, how are you? I'm Terri Toll, and I've been a Wichita resident for three years now. Just in listening to the speakers, I was one of the 121 that spoke in front of the city council, and in listening to them there and here today, everyone's speaking about freedom, and that's really what we want to stress and continue to stress. We want our freedom to choose what's right for us, what's right for our families, what's, what's right for our health. I want to say I'm not opposed to masks. As a matter of fact, I made over 100 masks to donate when the initial shutdown began. I wore mine because I believed in slowing down the virus and not overwhelming the healthcare community. However, as time wore on and the data continued to come in, I began to question why we were still having to wear them because the numbers weren't adding up. But after listening to the district attorney speak, and I, this lady ahead of me just spoke about it too, last week in support, in support of extending the mandate, he supports it because it'll overwhelm his office with work. It has nothing to do with the health of the inmates or the community. That's just one example of, it's no longer about our health. These mandates aren't. Like I said, I'm not opposed to them. I'm not opposed to masks. I'm opposed to being forced to wear them. I believe in individual freedoms and responsibility. It's a business. If a business owner chooses to require masks upon any of his business, that's his choice, and I can either choose to shop there or I can choose somewhere else. If my coworkers and my family members want to wear them, that should be their choice. They know what's best for their health. They know, they need to be able to make that decision. I'm, I'm high-risk. I'm over 50. I have chronic health problems. I believe that my decision to wear a mask or not wear one should be between me and my doctor. I'm sorry, but you don't know me personally. You don't know my health risk, and you don't really know what's best for me. So I really feel like that these overreaching mandates need to end. I really, really hope that you truly listen to everything that everyone is saying today and, and give us the chance to make the decisions on our own, restore the freedom to make those choices. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
I don't, I don't see any questions at this time, so thank you again for your comments.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
My name's Jerry, and I live in Sedgwick County. First of all, I'd like to say that I have a medical exemption due to toxicity from mold exposure. It causes something called the air hunger, and I struggle feeling lack of oxygen on the regular, so putting a mask makes me feel lightheaded and nauseous, kind of like speaking today, actually. This, however, is why I don't wear a mask, isn't why I don't wear a mask. I have immune deficiency also caused by the mold exposure, and this also isn't why I don't wear a mask. The fact that it's been shown that breathing through a mask can foster the growth of black mold, which caused my illness in the first place, is not why I don't wear a mask. Beware to those of you who wear black masks and may not realize what's growing in your, in your mask because it's toxic. I sing on the worship team at my church, and when I look over the congregation all masked up, I get a pit in my stomach. It makes me want to cry. I feel so much oppression and sadness when I see the faces covered, no expressions. Those have all been stolen and hidden behind the mask. We've taken away the gift of hugging one another and in turn turned people into emotionless zombies. About a week ago, if you were able to watch the testimonies, Dr. Joey gave some information on vaccines and was told that the mask mandate has nothing to do with vaccines, but the truth is, it has everything to do with vaccines. It has everything to do with the government mandating whether we can leave our homes, whether we can go to the store to purchase necessities, whether we can work, ship together, and whether we have the right to say no to another mandated vaccine. It's about freedom. It's about medical freedom. Every other virus has built natural immunity even before vaccines were introduced. According to Dr. Tim O'Shea, it's scientifically, scientifically, immunologically impossible not to build herd immunity in nine months. If we keep masked up and don't get fresh air, we are only pushing this very important part of the equation off indefinitely. This, for some reason, has not been taken into account. Dr. O'Shea also states that our children's respiratory systems are still developing, and we're harming them, and, or harming that very important process when we force our children to mask up daily at school and in daycares. I'd also like to ask each one of you, have you spoken with other doctors and healthcare professionals about their opinion on mask wearing, or have you only hung your faith on one Dr. Minz? If out of all of you represented here today, your only health expert is Dr. Minz, then shame on you. I have spoken with many more, and not one of them agree with this max, mask mandate, not one. In fact, I've been in offices where as soon as they find out that you're not masked, they remove their masks and are excited that they can breathe for a little while. When is the endgame for masking? Respect our rights to choose what is best for us and for our babies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to jump in real quick. On your first page there, we have three speakers that were signed up to speak that have not come in yet, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. That's Speaker number three with the first name Michael, Speaker number seven, Donna, and Speaker number eight, Chris. So if they show up, we'll put them on the agenda, but it'll be later. So I just want to make you aware of that, okay?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello. My name is Amy Dobbs. Decisions that are made with restricted information are doomed to be divisive and disastrous. When physicians like Dr. Richard Bartlett and others who believe they have found a cure for COVID-19 are censored online, when scientists and doctors passionately disagree on the effectiveness of masks to prevent the coronavirus and prevent the spread of coronavirus, when diametrically opposed data is reported by medical journals, where does that leave us as citizens of Sedgwick County? This information disparity is why this mask mandate continues to divide families, friends, and houses of worship. This information disparity is why a record 120 people spoke against the mask mandate to the city council last week, and yet the county health official, Dr. Gerald Minz, tightens the grip of mask compliance. As our county commissioners, this information disparity now rests on your shoulders. As you simultaneously serve as the Board of Health, you are only listening to one point of view, that of Dr. Gerald Minz. You are only listening to him as you regulate and legislate, although he is, I'm sure, a very respected doctor. When you are restricting the information that you yourselves, as the county commissioners, take into consideration, you are participating and cooperating with this information disparity. In any other scenario in life, when would considering only one point of view be advisable? Additionally, do you think this is the last time you, as the county commissioners, will face a situation like this, a health crisis of this magnitude? Unfortunately, we are in a new era. I propose that the Board of Health for the second most populous county in the state of Kansas be transformed to be comprised of a diverse team of doctors, doctors who come from a variety of different frames of reference, doctors with specialties both in Western medicine and alternative medicine, to provide a well-rounded analysis. The people of Sedgwick County deserve decisions made with complete information, not just one-sided analysis. Otherwise, you become just like the Zuckerbergs of the world, censoring and restricting information, thinking you know what's best for those who are possibly less informed or less intelligent. Decisions that you make with restricted information are doomed to be divisive and disastrous.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Congress? Being done. Thank you again. Next speaker.
Very nervous. My name is Karen Burlett. The first thing I'd like to address today is in response to something Mr. Howell brought up yesterday about how much COVID tests are detecting in people who are being tested. I'll give you a story, a copy of a story in the New York Times explaining that some of the nation's leading public health experts are raising a new concern about how the PCR tests are probably diagnosing huge numbers of people who may be carrying relatively insignificant amounts of the virus, causing me also to ask, what numbers are we using in our testing equipment? The labs know the calibration method, and they also know the final numbers that they give out that tells how contagious you are. Yet you and I only get a yes or no answer. We should get all the numbers, and it should be based on a reasonable detection mode, around 25 to 30. We should know how many of the positive people being tested are not even contagious. That can be the reason for the low transmission of COVID from asymptomatic people. It would distinguish people who are pre-symptomatic and actually carriers, and it would keep from quarantining individuals, family, friends, and job people. If this information is available, I ask that you demand to see the numbers and that you let the people know who are not contagious. This would lower our percentages drastically. I'd also like to know why the courts can't hold a jury trial. I know this isn't all on you, but the mask mandate has control over a whole lot of things. It seems against constitutional rights of every citizen to be forced to remain on restrictions because of these few people. I have with me information from the U.S. Courts on COVID-19 Judicial Task Force that outlines suggested plans that can be implemented to conduct jury trials. This was released on June 24th of this year. Other states are holding jury trials. Why are we not here? Have they simply let the time run out to get another extension? They knew this problem was coming and did nothing about it until it was almost too late. While it's been stated that will let criminals out on the street, what about the innocent people waiting for their day in court? Demand that the courts be opened. They can do it. It seems to be the same tactic the hospital used, scare the people to accept mandates. They had us believing they would run out of ICU beds when they knew all along they had a plan to expand. That's their job. And after we figured out the beds were okay, they said they were short-staffed and worried about that, but they didn't mention that just like with the beds, they also have C guidelines on what to do when they're short-staffed. I brought some of those. We are getting very tired and skeptical of Dr. Minz and the hospital and now the courts seemingly crying wolf with probabilities and possibilities and maybes, and we think and it might, and it just can't be done. A rise and fall in numbers are expected, as they have always been with the flu. Hospitals deal with that. One time a few years ago, my husband was put in a pediatric ICU because they were full on the adult side. It's not a big deal for the hospitals. They do it all the time. According to the guidelines, they don't have, their staff can work even if they're, if they're not symptomatic and they've been wearing their masks, and I've got information on that. I've talked to three people who know nurses who were there and, who were laid off at the time that they were saying they were short-staffed. They could have called them back. They're still laid off. And a fourth person in the ICU unit is working overtime to this day. Why? Could the nursing staff actually be from the hospital management decisions, not because they're overstaffed? How many of you know companies who work their people overtime rather than hiring more people? Our hospitals, I think, are better off when they're letting, letting us know. And that's all on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Just a quick comment. Karen, thank you for coming to, to speak with us this, this afternoon. I also wanted to know, this issue of amplification and tasking has been brought up numerous times, and we have not got an answer yet. So I'm going to continue to, to work on that, and I hope to get an answer soon. But thank you for bringing that up again today.
Okay, and I've got this information. So I don't know if I'll leave it here or if I should email it to you or what.
Please do email it to me. I'll be glad to distribute it to my colleagues.
Okay. And I also want, can I just make one more statement? We don't have any sound or visual supplied by the county in our waiting room. We were expected to use our cell phones to listen to our peers and to you guys in this meeting. So one of the, one of the news people was happy, not happy, I don't know if she was happy or not, but she was willing to set this up for us, and we've been listening through equipment that she got and she set up, and she is monitoring through this whole meeting on her own time.
Chairman Meisner?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Karen for coming with We Message, not every day, but three days a week. So thanks for, thanks for coming out, Karen.
You're welcome.
Karen, I'll add that, I'm sure this is our first attempt at this, and we'll learn from it, and hopefully it'll be better.
I'm hoping it was just an oversight.
I think it probably was.
And I give notes to her, and I would give her name if she would allow it, because she's helping us, and I think that's wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Sandra Scott. I live in Wichita, Kansas. Okay. I know you've been hearing about the mask mandate and everything right now. I agree with it, but... agree with it, but right now I'm here to talk about the bars. I see that you guys actually gave us another hour out for that. I would like to say thank you. But I don't understand the difference. You gave us an hour. Why couldn't you just let us open until two? I mean, leave us at 50%, 75%, whatever we need to do. Our workers are wearing masks. Yes, we're not daycares. We cannot make grown adults wear masks. I make sure everybody in my bar has a mask. They use it when they enter the bar, and then it sits beside them or it's in their pocket. So, you know, I've been a Sedgwick County rich, or I've lived in Sedgwick County for most of my adult life, 30 years. I know you guys gave us a little bit today, but, you know, I'm kind of disappointed. You guys are bankrupting us. The state of Kansas does not understand. I mean, I've been a bar owner a shorter amount of time than some of the bar owners here in town, but there hasn't been no clusters. You know, we're trying to go by the mandate. We're doing the best that we can. So I ask again, let us open until two. Give us our restriction on our capacity. We'll go by that, you know? We'll do the mask mandate. Whatever we have to do, we need paychecks coming in. That's about all I got for you. I mean, I just really, really plead with you. Let us stay open until two.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just to say, Sandra, thank you for coming before us today. I have heard from other bar owners that are saying that they are complying with the spirit of the order. They're following all of the other aspects of the order, but the issue of the clock is the thing that's causing them a lot of problems. So are you confirming today that if you were given the opportunity to stay open to, I would say, normal hours, that you would intend to keep the other aspects of the order in compliance?
Yeah, if you put us at a 50% capacity and say our workers got to wear masks, and, you know, I will do whatever it takes, but we need to get back to a normal for us. I mean, I know a lot of people that don't own bars don't understand. I'm not standing on the street. I'm not forcing people to come through my door. That is an individual's right. So, you know, if we can be open till two, even at 50% capacity, you know, we got to get back to normals, normal in this town. I went to probably 25 places yesterday. You know, nobody was wearing a mask. I had my mask with me. It hung on my ear like this. I was told at all these different businesses, you don't have to wear it. But yet the bars are taking the fall for everything in this town and in Sedgwick County.
Thank you for the clarification. And I do trust that the business owners, it's in the best interest of those business owners to do whatever they can to stay in business. And if it requires compliance with the health order, then obviously that's what they're going to have to do. But I do think that the clock is, in my opinion, not the right strategy. But let's be very clear, the commissioners today did not actually give you another hour. The commissioners today are making recommendations to Dr. Minns to extend it by another hour. So it's really up to Dr. Minns whether or not he chooses to do that or not. And it's to be determined. We'll have to see what he chooses to do. I don't think it goes far enough. I did support the motion today because it's moving the ball slightly in the right direction. However, I don't think it does enough to help you stay in business and stay successful. So I wish we could do more, but that is what, I want to make sure you understand exactly what happened today so far. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. I'm addressing you this afternoon regarding the inhumane hospital and long-term care facility COVID policies that bar family members from bedsides. Since a personal post on my Facebook page regarding my own experience with my dad went viral in three days, and to which Commissioner Howell referred yesterday at your staff meeting, and I did send a copy of my personal story to each of you, since that has gone viral and is now up to over 8,000 shares in five days and climbing, and also there's a petition that I started that quickly trended online, and it now exceeds 3,000 signatures, and there are more than 300 stories just on that petition with comments. I have been literally inundated with hundreds of gut-wrenching and personal stories of medical neglect because of the lack of accountability in nursing homes, stories of husbands and wives, adult children and parents, brothers, sisters, all being barred from seeing each other in hospitals, and often a hospitalized family member dying alone while those isolated outside receive this news on their phone, in their car. Young children are allowed to parent with them in the hospital. My question is, why is the parent-child relationship more important at the beginning of life than at the end? Elders must have an advocate. Patient rights and advocacy rights are being violated, and valuable facility accountability is being removed. The awareness has been raised. There are tens of thousands of people speaking up about their abuse at the hands of heavy-handed healthcare facilities. Local and state governments must act. And on that note, there are a couple of comments that Commissioner Cruz made yesterday during your staff meeting, and I want to address a couple of her comments. Ms. Cruz said, quote, "How do we as commissioners, the ones who are responsible for these orders," so you do admit you're responsible for some orders, "how do we take on the responsibility of communicating these things, working with the community to understand that once we get past all this, we can get back to normal or a new normal?" Ms. Cruz, I understand that you were referring to masks with that remark, but I urge you to recognize for thousands, thousands of families, nothing will ever be normal again with regard to time lost with their family members and the losses of family members, or even to that poor elder woman who was refused hearing aids because of blind adherence to misguided mask policies. Another quote from Ms. Cruz, getting back to senior living, "They regulate themselves. We can't step in and tell them what to do. It's important that we understand who sets their regulations, whether it's CMS or whether it's the state, but it's not the commissioners." I have about one more minute. Ms. Cruz, again, I beg to differ. The majority of this commission has been very happy to be a rubber stamp for Dr. Minns at virtually every turn, and you know very well that long-term care facilities are following guidelines from CMS, the CDC, the Kansas Department of Aging Services, the Sedgwick County Health Department, and Sedgwick County mandates. You do have responsibility here, and shirking it is a dereliction of your duty to taxpayers as an elected official. From the CDC's own website regarding long-term care facilities, quote, "Owners and administrators should refer to guidance from state and local officials when making decisions about relaxing restrictions, for example, easing visitor restrictions." I recently learned about the Essential Caregiver Program that has been adopted and being implemented in several states since July. Once adopted by state government, this program allows a family member to be designated an essential caregiver and is allowed into the nursing home or long-term care facility daily to help care for their loved ones. I call on local and state governments, and Kansas here, obviously especially, to extend this policy, to implement this policy as soon as possible, but to extend it to ER and hospital stays. One more thing I believe is noteworthy. The CDC visitor guidelines are almost entirely for the visitation of actual COVID patients, not visitors to patients in the general population of the hospital and/or nursing home. These--
Ma'am, thank you for your comments.
--are overreaching the CDC, and they're bound by local and state mandates.
Please, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ann Hathaway. I'm alive on Wichita.
Right. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any, oh, Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to say, your story is one of the most compelling accounts of what is wrong with our current policies. I wanted to say, well, first of all, is your dad still in the hospital, or is he out?
No, he went back to the assisted living facility where we cannot communicate with him because my parents cannot hear. They can't do FaceTime. They can't do anything with the computer, and we really can barely talk on the phone. So something's got to give. This has got to change.
Well, I know your parents, and I love them dearly. I think they're wonderful people, and I want to say thank you for taking time to write the op-ed. I think your story is changing the culture, and I'd like to encourage my colleagues to go spend some time thinking about what you have said regarding your World War II father. This is one of the most incredible stories. And I would like to say that I'm disappointed we were not able to have a proclamation available today, but I hope that next Wednesday we would have a proclamation, at least from Sedgwick County, to register if you will, an official opinion of Sedgwick County to ask for our care facilities to reconsider their policies to allow for people like you to interface with people like your father. So please stay tuned with that. I hope to see that happen next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I do--
I don't see any other comments.
--am simply here to appeal to all of you on behalf of literally thousands of voices. Almost every story I receive says, "I don't know what to do." Well, I do, and I'm trying to do it. So I'm appealing to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Eric Ivey, and I live in Old Town. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns. Keyword there is, listen. I'm here to tell you that I had no concern with the county health order before it was amended. Then on Monday, Dr. Minns amended the order to mandate masks and compliance. This order was made and instituted by someone that isn't an elected official. According to Tom Stoltz, the county health department has the power to shut businesses down if they aren't complying with public health. That is power, again, that a non-elected official holds. Let me say that again to make sure you're listening. A single person that wasn't elected has the power to shut a business down for anything that they deem a threat to public health. Dr. Minns states the bars and nightclubs have been traced back to young people with COVID. Really? Where's the evidence? Show us the bars and clubs that you think have been the cause of these COVID infections. The KDHU just released the COVID cluster information. I don't see any bars and clubs on it in this county. Actually, I only see one bar in the entire state of Kansas that's part of a COVID cluster. How does this make sense? You guys went from, or at least voted to recommend going from 11:00 to midnight. I commend you on that. I think that is something that is, should have been done, will be done, and I hope you guys, I hope Dr. Minns does take that vote to midnight that you guys agreed upon earlier today. I really wouldn't know that if that is the case, because again, we don't have access to watching you guys across the room from us. Thank you to KTV for supplying us with their projector and their screen. Commissioner Howell said we need to be more consistent with this order. I agree. The order wasn't followed during the protests and the looting of QT, but nothing was done by this body then. Now, citizens enjoying their rights and freedoms as Americans are being taken away, local businesses that pay taxes are being forced to comply or being forced to shut down. I live right next to Brick and Mortar. They had a wedding last Saturday that went on until 2:00 a.m. Are you going to start shutting down wedding venues if they go past 11:00 p.m.? How many weddings will this ruin after they planned their event with your original health order and are now being forced to change last minute? On August 15th, according to the Sedgwick County Health Department, we had a positive infection rate of 12.3%. That wasn't very good. In 30 days, this is from yesterday's notice, we have lowered that to 5.9. What we have been doing has been working. So now, so why now are you amending this order? If what's been working previously is working, why are you amending it? Why are you adding more restrictions on it rather than relaxing? Under this new health order, my first amendment right of assembly is being taken away. This also violates the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. This also violates the equal protection clause of that Fourteenth Amendment. Just this past week, a judge ruled in the state of Pennsylvania on this issue. He ruled, and I'm quoting, "The response to a pandemic cannot be permitted to undermine the system of checks and balances. The Constitution cannot accept the concept of a new normal where the basic liberties of the people can be subordinated to open-ended emergency mitigation measures." Guess what, guys? COVID's here. People will get COVID. We are all taking reasonable precautions to be able to live our lives in the age of COVID. Right now, the silent majority is finally speaking up and pushing back. I urge this commission to go back to the order before it was amended Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you for sharing your comments. Also for the public, before you start, ma'am, the pro tem, Commissioner Cruz is the pro tem, the vice chair. I've got to be in my office for a minute. I'll still be on, but she will, because it's, this is the chamber, she'll be doing the thank yous and the next up, please, and recognize those of us that have a comment.
It's really hard to hear. Sorry.
It's okay. We're good. Thank you.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, my name is Elise McGrath. First of all, I want to just thank you all for your public service in hearing us out today. I'm a Wichita resident, and I am speaking up today because I believe the mask mandate is taking away our freedoms as Americans, and the harm that has already come from this mandate has outweighed any possible known benefits. First, I will speak on behalf of some of my friends who are teachers. They could not be here today and would be ridiculed if they were. They say they can't see their kids' faces, their smiles or frowns. They can't see them or see if they are being understood. It's taking away a huge piece of relational and educational growth during the largest developmental time of their lives, and also has instilled fear into a population that is not even susceptible to the virus, not to mention the hundreds of kids who simply hate it and cry when they get home from school. Now, speaking on behalf of myself, I would lose my job if I refused to wear a mask. I decided it's not worth it, and it's my choice to work there since it's company policy. But since the mandate, I now have to police a huge store and make sure every other customer in our store is wearing a mask. So now I personally have to take away people's freedoms, and honestly, it's soul-sucking. A business where we used to serve every race, color, and creed with pride have now turned into a place where if you choose not to wear a mask, you're asked to leave, and you can't do business there. That is not the America I know. The mask mandate is hurting the economy. It's hurting relationships. It's divisive. It's hurting schools, students, churches, and the community as a whole. Looking at world history, I can't help but think this mandate is conditioning us for more governmental overreach and governmental control. We are responsible for protecting our health, and you, our government, are responsible for protecting our freedom. In conclusion, if you want to wear a mask, great. If you don't, great, but please give us the choice and our constitutional rights back, and let's end this mandate and this ludicrousness. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Bill Stow. A lot of you know me. I came here this morning at 10:30 with prepared remarks that had worked out to exactly five minutes, and the first thing I was told when I got here was, "We'll be having you speak in about 30 minutes." Oh, and you only get three minutes. So immediately, we lost 40% of our time by an arbitrary policy. And that's really what I just spoke to you about two weeks ago, how policy has become more important than law. It is absolutely ludicrous. I had the remarks prepared. I'm not even going to read them. I'm just going to hit some bullet points, because I want to tell you a few things that happened while I've been here today that I think you should be aware of. I was forced, first of all, to speak from seven and a half miles away for no explicable reason. Now, if we were going to hold this commission meeting, a public meeting, seven and a half miles from the courthouse, perhaps the commissioners should have come here. I think we have a right to see what the public meeting-- I think we have a right to see what the public meeting is doing. And see, that's the next problem. You didn't even make it possible for us to see the meeting. We have 50-plus people sitting in a room across the hall from where I'm speaking and there was no way to be able to see what was going on unless we wanted to use our own devices. Thank you to KTV because their reporter was nice enough to let us use her laptop and projector. But had it not been for that, none of us would have been able to even see the meeting that we came to attend. I was also told that we would be brought into a separate room when it was our time to speak. Well, there's about six of us in here right now. And when some of us chose to applaud for other speakers, we got nasty looks and shutdown waving from the assistant county manager. Now, I'm sorry, but you're our employees. Start acting like it. For once, understand that we have freedom of speech, we have freedom of expression, and if I want to applaud someone that I agree with, I'm willing to do it and I will not be told not to because I'm not being quiet. I mean, seriously, let's act like adults. You know, I spoke to you a couple of weeks ago and expressed my concern, the fact Dr. Menz was extending all these orders without anybody voting on them because apparently we don't have the courage to take responsibility or be accountable to the voters. You've destroyed businesses, you've destroyed lives, and when I say you, I mean all of you that chose not to vote. Mr. Howell, I would like to recognize the fact that you actually asked people to vote. Thank you. See, Jim Howell understands that policy is not law. Law is what we're supposed to live by, but you've chosen policy. Even some of you who sent me an email back told me how policy was more important. It's the most incredible thing I've ever read in my life. But here I stand, trying to explain that to you. I guess it's falling on deaf ears. We keep letting an unelected bureaucrat make all the decisions, which begs the question, why are we paying you? Why are we paying five people to govern our county if you choose to defer all actions? And even here, the three minutes that should have been five has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Next speaker, please.
I'm a lifelong resident of Sedgwick County. I'm also a healthcare professional. I've been a nurse for 40 years and an advanced nurse practitioner, nurse for 20. I have worked in the public health arena. Matter of fact, I was in the school systems when the H went in, when a virus hit us in 2009. And never in my life would I have ever thought that a virus, that the reaction to a virus has reached this epic proportion of fear and restrictions. We have followed the steps, we've tried to affect the curve, we have gone on two weeks to four weeks extensions on every one of our systems. Actually, phase out was to occur in July and between numbers and deaths and spikes, all we do is argue about the numbers and whose numbers are right and who numbers are wrong. This week, the Wichita mayor stated that he had talked to the governor and the White House and how we are the shining light of Kansas with our numbers. But, Mr. Mayor, these mandates have always been on a voluntary basis and the people that choose to wear masks have done that and the ones that have chosen not to have also. Our businesses also continued with what was in their best interest along with the safety. But yesterday, this decision was redone and whoever the power fees has decided that we needed to make it into a voluntary to a mandate. So, businesses now don't have the choice to make that decision for them, which is their rights. So now, this has now become a civil liberties and a constitutional issue that needs to be addressed. And if you don't think, and this is what the government has driven us to this point, and if you don't think that this is a civil rights issue, look at all of the exemptions you have listed on your recent mandate that was done yesterday. Safety and the culture of safety has now been dictated to us. We have now become normalization or what appears to be normalizations. We need to open up Kansas and the mask mandate is the first that needs to happen. I have a 91-year-old mother that I take care of and have complete control over what her exposure is. So I don't need the government to tell me or her how we should do this. Businesses are struggling right now tremendously. Our aviation industry is flat, not necessarily due to the virus, but due to other things, but in conjunction with the virus, it has made our economy awful. So, is this the fundamental changing of America? Is this the 1776 now that we have become awoke? Do you know that 30 days makes a habit? And the fear of this virus doesn't trump the rights of the people, no matter what your percentages are. So please, open up Kansas. And by the way, Fauci just stated that there probably would not be a vaccine until 2021. So let's let the legal authority make this decision of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions, commissioners. Next up, please.
And I've been, I first off want to thank everybody for coming out today and sharing. And I'm gonna talk to you about something maybe nobody else is today. But I've been thinking, God, what can I say to get them to change their mind? I feel like God said nothing, so I'm just gonna share the gospel. 2,000 years ago, there was a man who walked this earth. His name was Jesus. He's the son of God. And when he was 33 years old, about my age, he was crucified on a cross with sins of the world, that whosoever believes in him shall not perish but have everlasting life, resurrected on the third day. When a person gives their life to Christ, they receive a seal. It's the seal of the Holy Spirit, which the Bible tells us is a guarantee of the things to come. It's the promise of eternal life in heaven with Christ. What you may not know is that the Bible also tells us that another seal is coming and this seal is also going to seal the destiny of billions of people, their eternal destiny, but it's not for heaven, it's for hell. And this is the seal of Satan. The Bible says this seal has a name and the Bible calls this seal a mark and it is called the mark of the beast. And there's one way that Satan is going to enforce this mark on the people of the earth. He is going to cut off their resources. He is going to stop them from being able to buy and sell. You cannot buy and sell without the mark. You cannot buy and sell without the mask. You can go into a Menard store today and you can shop for hours, but when you get up to register, you can't buy anything. They say you can't buy without a mask. You can't buy without a mask. You can't buy without a mark. Mask, M-A-S-K, mark, M-A-R-K. If you don't see where this is heading, this seal of Satan is going to cause the bloodshed of countless martyrs for the name of Jesus Christ. But worse than that, this seal, this of Satan, this mark, is going to cause the eternal destiny in hell and fire for billions and billions of people. So, I come to you today, you say to me, "Wear a mask, save a life." I say to you, "Take it off, save a soul." Okay? We know where this is going. Jesus said, "What good is it for a man if he gains the whole world and loses his soul?" What he's really saying is, is it doesn't matter if you escape COVID and spend eternity in the fires of hell. So, one day, every single one of you is going to stand before God, stand before the judgment seat of Christ, and you are going to have to give an account of how you vote today. You're gonna have to give an account and you're not gonna be able to say, "God, I'm sorry, I didn't know that a mandatory mask would lead to a mandatory mark and I hope I'm wrong, but if I'm not..." You're not gonna be able to say you didn't know because he's gonna say, "I sent a girl down there to tell you."
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions. Next speaker, please.
My name is Colleen Johnson and I'm here for the first time and I support everything that's been set up to this point and I want to add what I have to share. I do thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak to you. And what I'm gonna talk about is about this mandatory lockdown and what it has done. So what is going on with this mandatory rule on the lockdown? I did a study and this is what my study is. And it's a quote from Dr. Erickson. It's also gonna be two quotes from the frontiers in physicians addictive disorders. This is what my talk is on. And then I have a few words I would like to share as well. So I thank you for your time. I studied the talk by Dr. Erickson, a member, a supporter, and who stands with many professional medical doctors with a voice for all nations around the world. This group is called the American Frontline Doctors and God bless them for giving us the truth. So what do public mandatory lockdowns bring into our lives? This is a fact. Suicide on hotline has risen to 600% in spousal and child abuse. This is a quote from Dr. Erickson. This is a fact. On June 12th, 2020, starting to use alcohol and other substances are increasing their use during this COVID-19. Fact. June 16th, 2020, excuse me, July 16th, 2020, the overall increase in cocaine. Furthermore, the consequences, the social isolation and the likely limited access to detoxication has caused additional psychological distress. And this quote is from the frontiers in psychiatric addictive disorders. I'm gonna get it right and I want you to listen. Mandatory lockdown, this is my thoughts. The mandatory lockdown is considerable for an increase in suicide and abuse of many lives to many, even to count or even wrap around my head. What I am seeing and what we are dealing with because of what you have chosen to do. We are not having the right to exercise our constitutional rights of freedom of choice, taking away our God-given rights and causing fear and hiding the truth and making this a political run. And most of the media not getting as honest facts is causing public epidemic. No, I'm not finished. In conclusion, I would like to say a part of the Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves, our prosperity, do or gain the established Constitution for the United States. Please stand for it. Thank you.
Thank yous very much. Any questions? I don't see any. Next up, please.
My name is Stuart. Your name is Travis.
Can you hear him, okay, commissioners?
He's a little quiet.
Okay. First of all, thank you for this privilege, I consider it a privilege, to exercise my right by coming before you to express my opinion. I will be very grateful. I am not a prophet or seer. I am a common Christian with concerns for where my world is being driven without seeing future change. During the last several decades, we as a people have experienced a falling away from basic religious humanity to activities of a baser nation and thus have lost the closer feelings of oneness with our Creator. If we truly wish the looting, murders, burning of our cities, child and spouse abuse, and the alleged systemic racism to go out of our lives, then let us return to our Creator so He will draw closer to us. Let political insanity die and go the way of the world. God has not moved nor turned His back to us and the seemingly ever-increasing evils that seem to prevail today, but He will not grant that which we do not deserve. Let God be the one in whom we trust. Return as our national motto, in fact, and not just wishful thinking, and He will return our cause to advance much more under His sheltering arms. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Tracy and I'm a lifelong resident of Wichita. CDC recently stated that 94% of test results could be false positives. PCR tests, as stated by the inventor, are not to be used as diagnostic tests, yet we use them. 94% false rate would reduce our number of cases quite significantly. Good data is essential. Why do we count tests and not patients? If one patient is tested four times to get a negative, why is he counted as four patients? That's inaccurate tracking. How many of the 200, I'm sorry, the 2,572 hospitalizations were actually for other diagnoses but recorded as COVID? We count PCR antigen and probable or suspected cases. Probable or suspected is not science and it's not fact. How many of our 534 deaths had major comorbidities? How many were purely COVID? We do not mask and distance for influenza, which currently stands at 1,539 deaths for the season. We understand that a virus is a virus and it's gonna do what it's gonna do. If you're compromised, stay on. Cornerstonedata.com tracks very low and consistent stats for hospital beds occupied by COVID patients and ventilators used by COVID patients in Sedgwick County. People say our numbers are good because of the masks. Then why is it that if you grab stats from South Dakota and Sweden, who did no lockdown, no response, and you put the two curves together, they follow exactly the same pattern? I always thought that county commissioners handled things like preparing and approving budgets, managing county parks and facilities, pensions, water quality, economic development, property and sales tax collection, but I guess I was wrong. I am not shopping in Sedgwick County while masks are mandated. I shop in Butler or Cali County. That affects taxes collected by Sedgwick County and the businesses here, but other counties will continue to get my money until Sedgwick County ends the mask mandate. COVID is not intelligent. It doesn't know where I am. It cannot tell time and these rules and mandates are very random and obscure. We have been deceived with bad data and if you cry wolf too much, you get ignored. As county commissioners, it is not your job to manage my health. It is my job. Dr. Menz and Dr. Norman are not elected officials. We, the people, had no say in their right to mandate. For every doctor there is that says masks work and are necessary, there are at least three that disagree. Listen to the people that elected you. Live the mandate for masks. If people are more comfortable wearing one, they certainly have the right. But allow those who do not choose masks to decide for themselves without judgment. We do not want a nanny state. 90 out of 105 counties in Kansas opted out of the governor's mandate and we can do that too. U.S. District Judge William Stickman IV recently ruled on the Pennsylvania lawsuit in favor of the people. His final remark was, "The Constitution cannot accept the concept of a new normal where the basic liberties of the people can be subordinated to open ended emergency mitigation measures." I want you to know I have 10 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren and I will fight to the death to preserve their right to be free and I sense that their freedom is in danger.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. I don't see any questions.
Jessica, I apologize in advance if this comes across harsh, but due to time restraints, it is what it is. I would love to sit down with any of you in a different situation for a great conversation. If you desire, if it's your desire also, please get my name and contact me. I'm number 28 on the list. I'm sure that the decisions you make for our county must weigh on you night and day. At least, I hope so. I could talk to you about the scientific numbers that Dr. Menz and the governor and her doctors are presenting. However, those numbers are flawed and manipulated. It's time you look at these numbers and question how you might correct these flawed numbers and the manipulation that is so clearly being abused. I could talk to you about the economy or how the economy is being affected, how the largest employer here in our county will again be extending more layoffs in the coming weeks. This company is using COVID to hide behind. Quit using COVID as an excuse. Instead, look at how many small businesses are being affected. Because of your decisions, these small businesses are being robbed of income that they need to live and support their family. Your decisions are keeping these small businesses from providing a way for their employees to earn enough money to live and support their families. I could talk to you about the decision, how your decisions are causing hate, division in our community. I could talk to you about how your decisions are affecting our places of worship, our schools, those with mental issues, the health issue, and probably the most important, our children. We used to stand proudly on the fact that our community was a great place to raise our children, but now people question that. I promise you, though, we, the people, see and understand what you're doing, and we are way too smart to allow this to happen, this to go on much longer. It needs to stop today. We know that with a simple vote today to amend or revoke this mandate, you can end this today. I promised the city council a week ago that their decisions would affect the outcome of the next election. It wasn't a threat, it was a promise. I could promise you, I could promise you the same today, but instead, what I will promise you today, and in no way is this meant to be a threat, it's a promise, your decision today will affect whether we, the people, proceed with the legal actions that we are currently seeking. As I speak here today, if you're not aware, all across the country, people are taking legal actions against those unconstitutional actions by local governments, as we will do here also. Last thing. Mr. Dennis, I'm from your district, sir. I want to publicly say shame on you, sir, for not being more in tune with the people of your district and what they want and desire most. You can change that today.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you. Next up, please. Please state your name for the record.
Hey, Rick Coleman, Derby resident. We had a huge reservation in early on our kids in public school this year because of the COVID-19 mask mandates. If kids were going to be forced to wear masks all day long in school, I was a firm no. In the beginning of August, we were told by our school principal, as of today, that students would be able to take their masks off at their desks because they're spaced three to six feet apart. At that time, the county was at a 12.5 positive test rate, and at the beginning of school, we were at a 7.5%. Today, we're at 5.9. When our kids got home from school the first day, we asked them how their day went. My child in elementary let me know that they wore their masks while seated in their seat, at recess while playing on the playground in the designated area, and at PE unless they were seated on a marked spot on the floor. My daughter did tell me that the teacher took half the kids out of a class of 16 to the floor, let them space out, and removed their masks while she read to them. Meanwhile, the other eight students were sitting at their desks with their masks on. Then they switched. My youngest elementary student said she had her mask on while in her seat, running in the gymnasium for PE, and she was unable to remove it for recess while playing in a grassy area. They were both able to remove them for lunch. My eighth grader said, "They told us we can only take our masks off when we go outside." But we never go outside. We sent an email to the elementary teacher just to ask what changed. She said that they weren't able to space six feet apart and gives them mask breaks. The teacher must have told the principal because the principal emailed saying, "There's a mask mandate, and the committee meets every two weeks to make a decision." We then reached out to the superintendent. She said masks should be worn since there's more than 15 people in the building. She said they shouldn't be able to remove them at recess, PE, and lunch. She said she'd check on the recess. The kids should be able to play wherever they would like and without masks. We also emailed a BOE member last Thursday. Five days later, he responds, "I've inquired with the district and will get back to you." On Friday, my oldest elementary child came home and said after lunch, "A teacher came in and said she got a message and no more mask breaks while in the building." However, the superintendent told me directly that administration would take them off in their offices. I contacted the superintendent again that evening, feeling like this was retaliation. I informed her that the state mask mandate was lifted. She did not care. I then informed her that a non-elected official is keeping the county under a mask mandate. I proceeded and asked her, "As Sedgwick County lifts their mandate, will Derby Public Schools lift theirs?" She said, "No, not necessarily." She goes on, "By the recommendations of the Health Department, yesterday, my child said she still had to play in the designated area for recess." How many of you do push-ups, sit-ups, and a pace or run challenge in a mask? I'll wait. None. That's exactly what Derby Middle School is doing today in PE. Please add schools to the exemption list. If we can wear masks for 10 feet while walking into a restaurant and then take them off, if students don't have to wear them while huddling up in football and volleyball games, and you can't get COVID while sitting on a designated spot on the floor in the gym, but you can at their desk, this is asylum. Of last closing, I'd like to read a statement. Coming out of the Constitutional Convention in 1787, Benjamin Franklin was asked, "Well, doctor, what have we got? A republic or a monarchy?" A republic, if you can keep it. You're not keeping it. I'll stand with questions.
Yes, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I wanted to just say, Rick, thank you for coming today. I would like to make a point that he is a former school board member of the City of Derby, USD 260. He and I have spoken numerous times about this mask mandate and how it is impacting schools. One thing I think is unfortunately being, the policy that they're embracing right now is even when they have social distancing within the school, they're still being required to wear masks. And I think that it should be clarified that masks are only when social distancing is not being exercised. You don't need to do both. It's the reason why someone doesn't need to wear a mask if they're driving their own car down the street or walking down the street, whatever. You don't need to wear a mask if you're out on the playground. And so these orders have been misapplied and misinterpreted, and I think that the rules are being overly strictly mandated within the school system. This again points out, and by the way, there are other school board members at the City of Derby that have asked, if you will, to have the county, if you will, hand this off to the schools. And again, I would make an argument once again that schools know best about what's right for their properties. I would rather see them have the authority to have this debate within the school district. Not just the superintendent, but the school board members themselves, and the parents of the school board of the schools, of the school district ought to have the ability to make the policy for their own school system. So I don't think the Sedgwick County is the best suited for this. You've made some really good arguments today, and I want to say thank you for taking time to come before the commission today. Thank you.
No, but it's because of the mask mandate that they're setting these policies.
Right.
And that's why I'm asking for schools to be added to the exclusion list, just like churches are, and let the school districts make their own mind up.
I do agree with you, Rick, and I wish we could do that. I'll do my best to advocate for that change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I don't see any other questions.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Michelle Born, and I'm the owner of Michelle's Beach House in Derby. Today, I'm here to voice my opinion about the current order that is in place regarding restaurants and clubs. As a small business owner, I take the safety of my customers and my employees very seriously. We have implemented all safety measures recommended and mandated by the county. Restricting our hours of operation for the reasoning that people gather more after 11:00 PM is not fact-based. It's not only in bars that people congregate in large gatherings. Our community's churches, restaurants, and lakes are full of large gatherings way before 11:00 PM. So how can you justify restricting our hours of operation and not theirs? You can't pick and choose randomly what businesses you're going to restrict hours of operation. Coronavirus doesn't just come out after 11:00 PM. I cannot stress enough that we cannot survive by closing at 11:00 PM. It just doesn't make sense. My business is down 8%, and the bills are still there. My staff are seeking employment elsewhere. Their income has been vastly reduced due to our restricted hours of operation. Losing employees, losing the volume of my clientele, and losing hours of operation has put a huge impact on my business. I am requesting that the county commissioners reconsider restricting hours for restaurants and clubs. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Cruz.
Sure. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yeah, yeah. Michelle, good to see you. So we did, I'm sure you saw earlier, passed an amendment and a recommendation, Dr. Menz, about extending it to midnight.
Yes.
Will that help at least?
So for me, here's the deal. 95% of my clientele comes from Wichita.
Yeah.
So therefore, people don't come to City of Derby until 10 o'clock, 10:30, 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
And then I'm having to close at 11 o'clock?
Yeah.
When we're just now creating somewhat of a clientele?
Yeah.
I do appreciate anything at this time for it to be extended.
Okay. And what I'll say, Michelle, is it's the goal, and you'll be able to probably see nodding from the other commissioners, it's our goal to get all of these mandates on curfews and stuff. And we're moving towards that because our numbers are continuing to decline, which is amazing. So I think every single one of us want businesses fully open, and that's where you saw an agreement of 5 to 0 today to say we're at least moving it to midnight. So it's not a loss on any of us, and truly, all of us have friends in your industry, all five of you still. We all have constituents and friends, and we want the bar, restaurant, nightclub industry fully back over. So that's just what I want to let you know.
Thank you.
We're moving it forward, and we have every indication to believe Dr. Menz is going to agree to that midnight order.
And here's another thing. You know, as a business owner and business owners, we are doing our best to have that social distancing. I take temperatures at the front door. I require masks to be worn inside my club.
Yeah.
Not like you're standing at the table, not unless you're sitting at the bar and you're drinking, just like restaurant. But have you guys been to a restaurant at 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock at dinnertime? Packed. And where's the social distancing there?
Good question. Good question.
So I'm for the safety of everyone, but as a business owner, we cannot survive, people do not get out until after sunset to go and have drinks. So people just don't go to bars before 11, before 10 o'clock.
You're right. I just wanted to let you know we're hearing you and your entire.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for coming and understanding the predicament we're all in as well.
Appreciate that.
So I appreciate you and your free-market positions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
I think we have, next up, Jeff.
Jeff Pierce. Kristi Noem, the governor of South Dakota, never shut down the state of South Dakota, never ordered a mask mandate, and never limited what medications a doctor can prescribe, including hydroxychloroquine, and South Dakota is getting along fine. On July 27th of 2020, a group of America's frontline doctors held a press conference on the steps of the Supreme Court and stated hydroxychloroquine is a preventative and a cure for COVID. These doctors state that taking one tablet of hydroxychloroquine every two weeks will keep us from getting COVID. They also state hydroxychloroquine is the cure when given with additional medicines such as zithromycin, and they have hundreds of patients to back that up. These doctors put their lives and reputations at stake because they believe in this so strongly. They wanted us all to know, and there is no reason to doubt them. They also state to open the schools. Something happened on the screen here. I don't know what happened there, but anyway. They also state to open the schools because there is no threat to the children. Now, as we all know, that video has been completely removed from the internet, and any information about hydroxychloroquine is being canceled by the mainstream media and social media. You have to ask yourself why. You can still see this video at America's Policy Institute, and I highly recommend it because it is proof that we are being lied to. In May of 2018, Congress passed the Right to Try, and Donald Trump signed it into law. The Right to Try bill allows terminally ill patients access to experimental medication treatments not yet approved by the Food and Drug Administration. Nowhere in that bill does it exclude hydroxychloroquine for COVID. Last month, the president came out and stated Plaza Treatment works for COVID. I know it does because my wife's 92-year-old grandfather just got COVID. His lungs filled, he went to the hospital in Kansas City, received the Plaza Treatment, and within 48 hours was back home. This is the only time in history of mankind that the masses have been convinced they are sick without any symptoms. Now, if someone wants to wear a mask, I believe we all are in agreement that that's their right. But the list of misinformation about this pandemic is too long to go over in the time I'm allowed here today. And in addition, if this was a real pandemic, our families, our friends, and our neighbors would be getting sick and dying. We wouldn't have to have the talking heads on the news tell us we would see it with our own eyes. This is not a pandemic. I can stand here all day and give you reason after reason to stop this nonsense. I am here today to ask you, instead of just making a mask mandate in an attempt to appear you are protecting and serving the people you represent, but to put forth the effort and order the pharmacies and the doctors to give us access to hydroxychloroquine, put pressure on the hospitals to advance their Plaza Treatment efforts, put the pressure on the governor to open this state up and let us get back to our lives. Imagine enjoying everyday life again. Imagine not living in fear of one virus where there are so many other deadly things. Think of how we are conditioning our children to live in fear over a virus that has a 99.94% survival rate. Because it's not about the mask anymore. It's not about the social distancing or being locked. It's not about the social distancing or being locked in my home. It's about the people that are supposed to be serving and protecting me and not exhausting every option available to reduce our fear level as much as possible and forcing me to wear a mask and social distance and cower in my home. This country was not built on fear. I would rather take my chances of COVID than live in fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I don't see any questions from any commissioners. Next up is Devin Pinkston. State your name for the record, please.
Devin Park City. I don't have many statistics and facts on what I'm reporting because I'm attempting to keep up the mass political game that this has become. I'm also learning how to sort through the massive amounts of data that seem to contain more lies than half-truths than anything. I am writing to you, city commissioners, regarding the mandatory emergency declaration and mask order for not only the citizens of Wichita but of Kansas as a whole. I have lived with an internal medicine doctor for close to 10 years, who has attained over 10 years of education. I'd like to think I'm familiar with their practice, their motives, their intentions for medicine and so-called well-being of the people. I do not claim to be an expert or professional in the medical field. However, I will say that I've overcome vast amounts of health issues that were no longer, that no longer seem much of a mystery to me. Most of the disorders I have overcome were in direct opposition to what I was told to do. My trust in doctors, scientists, and politicians have left me long ago. These very issues are still a major topic in the medical field of today. Why is that? Because the medical field creates customers and not people. The conditions I have overcome are central nervous system disorders, issues with my kidney, thyroid, eyes, and skin, sensory perception and autoimmune disorders that include the deadening of sight sensation, hearing and smell. If you are familiar with the body and educated through experience, to the extent that I am, of the immune system and gut health, and all of the other makings that work in unison to not only ward off infection and viruses, but use those infections and viruses to form better defensive protection for the next time your body runs into it, then you know that this selection infection from China is nothing more than a probe of greed, control, power, and manipulation to dictate what the masses can and cannot do. It's wrong on every level to serve an agenda that is not for the people and by the people, and I'm not the only one waking up to this. To last I checked, Americans paved the way for every individual to be served according to their own needs, not rounded up and treated as a mass of uneducated fools. If I am granted the opportunity to come back and speak, I will make it my intention to bring along more statistical data from sources that I deem trustworthy. More and more eyes are following. We need to lift this order and take off the masks. Imagine being the victim of abuse, tied up, kidnapped, physically abused. These people don't want or need to go expressionless. They need to be able to express themselves, their emotions, their smile. Pushing these ridiculous orders onto already damaged people is selfish and wrong. And we need to be giving everybody more options and not less. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. I don't see any questions. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jeremy McTaggart, number 33 on your list, I believe. So commissioners, we're at an extremely crucial and pivotal moment in our city, our county, our state, and our country. I believe we're at the precipice of an extreme financial disaster. Over the last four years in Kansas, prior to the COVID-19, lawmakers have borrowed over a billion dollars to help underfund pensions, and we've sold over $400 million in bonds for highway projects and maintenance. The per capita debt load is larger than the four neighboring states combined. Here we are with a crisis on our hands. Now, I don't want to seem insensitive because it is a virus and it does have deaths attributed to it, but mostly with older individuals or those with severe underlying health issues. So I don't wish for anyone to get sick or die. However, it is inevitable that we all do just that. While some of the initial guidelines may have made some sense to a small extent as we tried to determine what was happening, we cannot continue down this path as it surely will lead to our destruction. See, when I moved here four years ago, the buzz around town was always, how do we keep the talented people from leaving the workforce? How do we get them to stay? Well, you see, I think Wichita's a charming city, but we've got some serious fiscal problems here, and we can't just keep kicking this mask mandate down the road to a further date. We need to open the city back up, let people decide what's best for themselves. Isn't that what a free society is all about? Are we going to be asking these same questions four years from now? See, our city currently has an $11.5 million deficit. How is that going to improve if we keep forcing people to wear masks, limiting the ability of businesses to operate at full capacity? See, in my profession, I'm a financial advisor, and I see firsthand the families that have been impacted by this mask mandate, from employees and small business owners. They're all losing hope. They're frustrated, and they're sick and tired of a handful of government officials determining their livelihoods. Many of these businesses and jobs will not return. Now, I've been fortunate because I've been able to shift all my work remotely. It's forced me to get out of my comfort zone a bit, but I've been fortunate. However, I can't say that about so many other people in this community. We're dead last in the country as it pertains to unemployment recovery. What are we going to do about it? We can't keep printing money and sending out checks. I think anybody with above-average intelligence in this room understands that. Now, I believe that each of you were appointed by your constituents who believe that you had the necessary background and experience to lead our districts. Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it your job to evaluate all the information and arrive at a decision that's based on what is best for the districts you serve? Not just because Dr. Mintz says so, right? So, Mr. Dennis, I just want to address this. I know you want what's best for the people of Wichita. It's up to you to make a decision to unmask Wichita. The solution can't be worse than the challenge, and I really think people need to make up what's best for them. The repercussions will be far worse if we don't stop this. I just want you to think about this. Close your eyes for a minute and rewind to January. Now imagine you don't have access to news, social media, or anything else. Think about that. You're living your life, you're going to work. How has the pandemic affected you? Did you even know about it? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions.
Darren Driving, Blue nightclub. Probably seen me in 19 news stories already because this isn't stopping. I think it's ironic that you guys affirmed our Constitution Week today, and we're sitting here begging, begging you guys to allow us to be able to operate so we can feed our kids. It's asinine. There's no data that shows that bars are specifically an issue, yet we're being targeted as some type of problem. So the other counties, Butler County, you've got the casino in Sumner County, these places aren't closed because they're not under your doctrine. And since they're not closed, people in Andover, in El Dorado, but Andover specifically is so close to Wichita that people are going there. There would have been cases that have shown up if bars were a problem. They're not. What, one restaurant in the entire state had a cluster? You are stripping our families. I've lost my house. I have to move now because I can't pay my bills. You've taken my cash flow. I've spent millions of dollars in this community and employed hundreds of people over my career, and you're stripping everything I've ever worked for. My assets have been borrowed against, and this 11 o'clock thing doesn't work. We were hoping people would come out earlier. They don't. They'll go somewhere else. The party at House is creating problems for police because we know how to handle crowds, and you're dispersing them. It's like telling a breakfast restaurant they have to open at 10:00 PM. It doesn't work. Allow us to operate. We have safety measures in place. We have protocols that other places don't, like security, to ensure that people are masked if that's what it takes for us not to lose our entire livelihood. It's really frustrating. On one meeting that we had with Lacy and Pete, Lacy said she wished she could just give us money. Well, she could have. Everyone tabled the funds that would keep us from going bankrupt. You tabled it permanently. What are we supposed to do? There's no money coming in. All of our bills are still due. It's so frustrating. David Dennis drives to a house party across from my house that I was going to, I'm about to lose because he's going to a Corvette club party, and I'm watching him drive his beautiful '62 Corvette with dozens of people in a small house. How is that different than me operating 4,000 square feet in a bar? I don't understand the hypocrisy going on here and why we're being targeted. It doesn't make sense. If you can logically say, Darren, this is why we're closed. We're closing you because people can't handle themselves. There are already laws saying we can't over-serve people. We have security in place. People are already aware that there's a virus out there. They're not on top of each other. Maybe some places there's problems, they need to worry about themselves, and if their customers don't feel comfortable going there, they won't go there. We're adults. Most of us have an immune system. It's a terrible virus, but please stop bankrupting us.
Thank you. I don't see any. Thank you. I don't see any. Oh, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just wanted to guarantee, thanks for coming today, and I'm sure you saw what I talked with Michelle Born just a few minutes ago, that, you know, we're trying to get there.
I know.
And I think it's really positive we had all five commissioners move forward to that today, and we'll hear back from Dr. Mintz today. So I just wanted to, like, appreciate you coming.
Monica, thank you, and Jim, always for doing that. Dave, I know you probably want to talk because I said about your Corvette club, but I...
I see a P.
No, P wants to...
I just don't, I want to compare apples to apples. I don't want to just be using this as a scapegoat, guys.
I get that. I get that, Darren. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Meister?
Darren, this is Pete. Sorry I didn't return your call earlier. I tried to call you this morning.
I was in the shower. Sorry, sir.
That's all right. Too much information there, but that's all right. We can talk some more. We're working. We're trying, but I think you're on a call with us, is it tomorrow with the bar?
It is tomorrow at 3:00.
We can have a good discussion then, too, okay?
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren, for your comments. We'll see you tomorrow.
Guys, thanks so much. I look forward to getting through this call here. Thank you.
Next up, looks like Nicole Lowe.
All right. My name's Mallory Beckston. Thank you guys for listening. First, I would like to make it clear, this is not just about masks, it's about the entire mandate itself. I would like to start off by a comment made yesterday during your guys' meeting by one of the commissioners that said they would like to get with the communications staff to, quote, "try to communicate what wearing a mask is and why we should wear them," end quote. This comment is indicative of the mentality that you guys know best and that your mind is made up to opposing views and research. Even comments in today's meeting shows you are blindly following one man's word, and I say that with all due respect. We may not have degrees in medicine or virology, but that does not mean we are not capable of doing our own research or question the authority that you guys are trying to hand down as we see our freedoms taken away. And our research should not be dismissed. In today's meeting, some of you said, "I don't know why the numbers are going down." But they are, implying the mandate must be working. The term for that is causation versus correlation. Correlation does not imply causation. We have an advantage over other countries because they were impacted before us, allowing us to analyze their data and see how we should be handling it, what approaches they took, and did they work? From the research I've done, it seems whether they made mandates or lockdowns, it showed nothing from the curves, and these are through countries all around Europe who have been dealing with this. Looking at data that we already have at the tip of our hands, there's 40 years-plus of congruent data on masks, even through other pandemics, yet, might I add, that we never used during other pandemics. But yet, the past six months of that congruent information or research has been squandered. Other research, such as the Blasera Green Core analysis of flu and its comparison of COVID, let alone other numerous research comparing COVID to other flus or pandemics throughout the 100-plus years, and the excess death rate that isn't much higher than some of the other normal flu seasons compared to this year for COVID. And yet, prior to that, we did nothing. We did nothing. No masks, no lockdowns. There's also more evidence research that most of us have antibodies to help fight COVID-19. I just saw one come out September 8th from being exposed to post-coronaviruses. They have pretty much the same RNA strand. I am happy to email everything that I have researched to you guys. I don't understand why we're trying to invent a new will. This really isn't a novel virus, and some of the research coming out is showing that, and kind of pure Dr. Mintz's word, is it is hard to find peer review articles and research. And the other thing is, is the peer reviews that are out there are being called crap because they were rushed through. So it's kind of like, let's take the knowledge that we know, and let's use that until we can get better, more, longer data, and let's just use what we know.
Thank you, Mallory. Thank you. Commissioner Howell has a question for you, Mallory.
Just a more of a comment. Mallory, I just want to say thank you for coming to us again today. I'm collecting my thoughts as the speakers come before, so we have had some really great speakers today. Rather than comment to each and every one of them, I do want to make some summary comments at the end of this. I don't know if you'll stick around or not, but I wanted to say you made some great points, and I'll be speaking, I guess, in response to most of the speakers today at the end of public comment. I hope to have a few comments in my own. Thank you again for coming before us. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Rochelle Masters. I'm actually a Butler County resident, but I've done most of my professional work in the greater Wichita metro and overlapped Wichita in the city as a whole. I honestly wanted to just share a little bit. I don't have a ton of stats to give you. My background is 20 years of human resources and safety management, the majority of that career being in mask testing because I worked specifically in manufacturing. My concerns with how we're meeting OSHA safety compliance and the way we're administrating the mask testing and just the policy surrounding it, I could debunk if I wanted to take the time, which I have three minutes, so I'm not going to go into all that with you, but we all know that there are three forms of masks. Two of those forms don't work when it comes to COVID. The only one that we actually know works with that is full respirator. In order for full respirator to be relevant, a person cannot wear a respirator-fit mask for more than two hours. That being said, 70% of people who are tested to wear a respirator cannot do so. Okay? They cannot pass the test. So I just want to give you that a little bit. That's an OSHA statistic. My point in being here is because I'm actually one of 100 of the rarest neurological profiles in the world. That means myself and 100 other people in the world are the rarest grades that you will ever see. I'm a patient who had brain surgery a year ago at Mayo Clinic. I cannot wear a mask. I know that we have policy in place that says if you can't wear a mask, then that we're not required to do so. That being said, because of the way the mask mandate is being managed in the state of Kansas, specifically in the Wichita metro, it has desperately impacted me. I've had employers spit on me. I've had them threaten to physically remove me from their buildings. I've had them tell me that cannot serve me because I will not wear a mask, and it's not a matter of wanting to, I cannot, because I don't have the same neural pathways that you do. I don't oxygenate the same way that you do. And so it would be catastrophic. I don't oxygenate the same way that you do, and so it would be catastrophic for me to do so. That said, mask safety in regards to how it's being applied is not helping prevent me from catching COVID-19. And I've had long talks with my doctor, my primary care who's working in the University of Kansas School of Medicine, as well as my neurosurgeon at Mayo Clinic whom I saw two weeks ago. There's a lot of concern over the additional damage that these requirements are putting on our health. And so as we look at that, my questions and my concerns for you are, in administering this, I know you have a lot on your plate. I can only imagine what you might all be going through. But in compliance to a policy that was placed federally and that Kansas adopted and adheres to under the Americans with Disabilities Act, we are not meeting the requirement of that guideline in administration in this city. I know there's language that says there's a reasonable accommodation for it, but it's not being administered appropriately. And my concern is for the lawsuits that will inevitably come as a result of this and the fact that you guys have the ability to make some of those changes now.
Thank you, Ms. LaMasters. I don't see any questions. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Jamela Kaufman, and I've been a resident here in Wichita for six years. As a concerned parent, the teacher's testimony that I am about to present was perfect for me to share today. My husband and I chose virtual school as a lesser of two evils because we will not expose our child to the fear mongering and no doubt the long-term psychological effects this mandate can permanently have on young minds. I will do whatever it takes as a mom to ensure her mental and emotional health are not shaped by people who have imposed this mandate but who also do not care or make it a primary concern of their own for her emotional health and mental health. This teacher has four points. One, facial expressions are a major part of both teaching and learning. Teachers read the faces of students to know if they understand fully or need help. Help that many students will not even ask for verbally or otherwise. Students read the faces of the teachers, looking for approval and even disapproval if they're acting up and so on. Masks disrupt the teaching and learning process by avoiding critical non-verbal communication between teachers and students. Number two, masks also often mute verbal communication, making it difficult for students to hear what is being said. Teachers also often can't hear or respond to the questions, and not all students are bold enough to speak up when they can't hear or haven't been heard. Those students will become struggling learners as the year progresses if masking continues. Number three, social interaction is all but nonexistent between various groups of kids as they pass each other during class change. Instead of hallways being filled with the normal chatter and laughter of children, it's quiet and solemn. Kids are missing out on a social experience by interacting with peers during these formative and critical school days. Teachers worry this will have a lasting negative effect on kids' emotional and social development. While some argue this is temporary, we cannot know the effects won't be permanent. For example, a crime victim's experience is temporary, but the emotional damage is lifelong. Bullying. Number four, if teachers can't see that something has been said, they can't address it. Most bullying goes unreported by the victim, and masks create a barrier between a bully and the teacher in the room who monitors and keeps other students safe from this behavior. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Thank you for being here today. Next up.
Hi. My name is Kyle Kumura. I'm the owner and operator of Revolution Lounge in Old Town. My topics today are to discuss the 11:00 PM closure time. I know we've already had this discussion multiple times, and that you have issued a recommendation, Dr. Mintz, about extending it to midnight. However, with this mandate of closing at 11:00 PM, my revenue has gone down 84%. I have 84% of wages, 84% of income that cannot be utilized for bills, rent, staff wages, and it's just frustrating because we can't operate by only making 14% of our total income on a daily basis. The other things that we have done with the mask mandate in order is we've done more than what other companies are required to do. We require all of our employees to wear masks. We have installed sanitation and areas for people who come in to use. We take people's temperatures, and we're trying to go above and beyond, and we're still being mandated to shut down earlier than we're required to by law, which is the 2:00 AM postmark. And other businesses get to capitalize because they're not restricted by their operating hours. And I just wanted to voice my concern, my opinion, of being shut down and how it frustrates me, and I'm sure it frustrates a lot of the other business owners that are bar owners, that we can't operate at our normal capacity. It's just frustrating. And thank you for your time. I know you guys are all doing your best with what the information you have and what you can do, and I just wanted to voice my concern and opinion. So I just wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. I don't see any questions from anybody. Thank you for being here today. Next up.
Hi. My name is Christina. I've been a lifelong Wichita resident, and, you know, we've heard a lot of talk in the last six months about frontline workers and heroes, and I'm here to represent one of them today, although her voice is just one of many and not of the teachers. You've been given information here on the vulnerability or rather lack there of the students regarding COVID specifically. But if we're about protecting the vulnerable, we need to start thinking about the vulnerabilities of other side effects towards the teachers and the students. We need to examine those numbers. This involves asking the parents and the teachers, those people that are on the frontlines dealing with this, with these students specifically who are in the thick of this. They are the essential workers. We need to be asking them, just like we did the doctors and the nurses early on in this. So this is the teacher's words, who is there with her students today. "This year is such a struggle. The city of Wichita's current mask distancing school mandate, as well as social distance same guidelines, have severely impeded my ability to teach. It starts at 7:30 in the morning when I am unable to greet my students with a normal, friendly handshake. I am no longer able to give my students a high five or a job well done or even an encouraging pat on the back. Studies show that humans need eight to 10 positive, healthy, physical touches every day. During the day, it's extremely hard for me, an ELA teacher, to read aloud a beautiful story without my mask falling down, going in my mouth, or precluding students from hearing what I say. It is impossible for me to smile at a student and have them know I am smiling at them. Kids need to see their teachers and grown-ups smiling at them. A selfie button on my shirt does not cut it. They need a real, sincere smile to remind them they are cared for and loved. I have become a masked cop, spending more time enforcing arbitrary and contradictory rules than I have doing my job, teaching, reading, and writing. I have watched a student's face drop in sadness before recess because his best friend is in the other class and they aren't allowed to play with him. I have watched the connections among students fail to be made at the beginning of the year due to restrictions. Physically, I feel awful. Sure, the beginning of the year brings some amount of stress and exhaustion, getting back into routine after relaxing and fun summer. However, this year, the feeling is unlike any other. I go home every single day with a headache, and we're hearing this of students as well, and it is caused by wearing a mask majority of the day. I am utterly exhausted trying to be both teacher and masked social distancing cop. My brain is fried trying to remember to quarantine books, remind students of their seat number at lunch, keep track of when we're eating and where we're eating in the classroom or not, remembering which zone we're allowed to play in at recess, tie mask breaks and calm down students who feel even a hint of headaches or throat or cough. I am emotionally drained from trying to explain to the kids why they can't talk to one another at lunch, play with their friends at classes or recesses, or breathe fresh air without hindrance of a mask. How do I justify these rules? Our health is suffering physically, mentally, emotionally, and spiritually. Kids need to move and play and be active and breathe fresh air. They need to form positive social connections and not keep everyone at a six-foot distance. They need to know they are loved and cared for. They need to not be afraid of their classmates and teachers at school. We must not punish our kids and rob them of their childhood. And as a side note, my student comes home from class and PE, she says her mask is soaked. What are the health repercussions of that? And all of this, I'm telling you, too, is also this school went over and above to make sure that every space was six-foot social distancing. So they also have that in place. So I beg you, listen to your constituents speaking today. Do not consider today just another box to check on. Accept the God-given responsibility you have to represent people. Thank you for your time, and may God bless you all.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do each day for the students that you teach and those that are near school. I know that's not an easy job. Next up, please.
I am Gina White. I come today to ask you to stop the mandate of masks. There is a warning label in a mask that says, "Not intended to prevent or eliminate exposure to any disease, infection, or communicable disease." I have an aunt that has COVID and wore a mask and still got it. You will still get COVID wearing a mask. It has mutated so much that it has minor symptoms. One person just had a bad headache. Many people said it was like the flu with body chills and fever. McPherson has stopped the mask mandate. So should Wichita Cedric County. I have several resources prove that these numbers are not accurate. Someone's loved one dies in a car wreck, they write COVID for cause of death. Another person died of a heart attack and cause of death is COVID. I know someone who went and was negative at one place and positive at another. The nurse said these tests are only 60% accurate. It's all the lies from the media and part of the Democrats' evil way to destroy Trump. So it's been six months, and those that have been maskless are still alive and riding in line. It's not the government's job to protect my health. It's the government's job to protect my rights. It's my job to protect my health. When you trade liberty for safety, you end up losing both. People are getting sick from these masks, and you are ruining their immune system. Nurses are seeing a big increase in patients with antibiotic-resistant pulmonary staph infections. They wear those filthy masks all day, and the bacteria living in their noses and mouth get stuck in a liquid moist stew in masks. Nurses also notice people getting lung and really bad sinus infections. I have talked to employees that said I get headaches and dizziness. People get nausea, vomiting, and even pass out. My kids don't want to go to school and wear a mask all day. They love school and socializing but are tired of the mask. One day, my son had a headache and says, "I can't breathe." It literally is wearing a face diaper, and kids are starting to get rashes on their faces. God did not make us to wear a mask and breathe in our own CO2. Inhaling high levels of carbon dioxide may be life-threatening. Hypercapnia, which is carbon dioxide toxicity, can also cause headache, vertigo, double vision, inability to concentrate, tinnitus, which is getting a noise like ringing or buzzing that's caused by an outside source, also seizures or suffocation due to displacement of air, which is from the health.com. Wearing masks is literally wearing our bodies out. Stop the mask mandate and be like other counties, states, and countries who are living a normal life and doing just fine. I say, take off your mask, wash your hands, stop living in fear, trust God, open the country, vote a person, and go see your people. God bless America, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time today. I don't see any questions. Next up, please.
Hey, what's up, guys? My name's Clinton Harris, and I've been in Los Angeles for a little while. So this whole mask thing is not just some, like, small little thing. This is so crazy, the level of psychological damage being done to people. In my opinion, I'm no expert on psychology, but I would say, looking at what I've looked at, it's going to take a decade for people to recover from this type of damage. So I just want to point out a couple of things. Wearing a mask removes your own identity. It succumbs you to a group, and we've seen damage done by groups, right? Riots late at night, midnight, they're not social distancing. So the level is just crazy. So I started following this thing, Spanish flu, right? Some people say it was the Spanish flu, and that's just not true. It's not that true at all. Any medical professional, healthcare professional that looks at the data, there's no way that anyone calls this Spanish flu. So what happened was Trump shut down China and all this other stuff. Dr. Tedros, who said he didn't know about it before, even though it was paper proof that he said he did know about it, when he was President Xi over in China before, came out after the fact and said this was going to get 60% of the population infected with a 2% to 4% fatality rate. That's over 96 million deaths. We're not even close to that. There's no comparison at all. Truthfully, being told, I have friends that are in both of these fields, and death rate, unfortunately, it is unfortunate, but it's life, is less than 0.05% worldwide. Less than 0.05% worldwide. So when I keep looking at all this stuff, you know, I don't know how much you guys know about the UN. If you don't, you should do research on this stuff. UN Agenda 21, 2020, 2030, Event 201. Event 201 was filmed, it's over five hours worth of footage that's still on YouTube right now, a global pandemic exercise event that took place in October last year and up in New England. It's just to the T. To the T, this is exactly what we've seen play out in the media. The media implicit to the damage, psychological damage, what we've seen play out in our country, and the spiritual damage as well. So these are some things you guys should go look at. Rockefeller Foundation's Lockstep Program, Rockefeller's Foundation Lockstep Program, page 38, outlines this exact scenario. This is no accident. This is all play. Like, this is all a play, and we're all being played, no matter what side of the political aisle you sit on. ID 2020, Bill Gitz, if you're not familiar with it. It's not a conspiracy theory. He wants to chip all of us. 7.8 billion people in the world. He was interviewed by a reporter at Live. He giggled about how four out of five people would have a severe reaction to his vaccine. 7.8 billion people, four out of five severe reaction. Do the math. Half the world is struggling with some sort of morbidity anyway. So these are some very important things that we should all take a moment to look at. This is not conspiracy theory. We are being lied to, we're being played. This is a massive chess game of our lives, our hearts, our minds, our souls, and our liberties. So I just want to point out a couple of other things real quick. Doctors being censored left and right. What's up with that? Social media, you have these massive giants that are coming out and censoring everything people post. Doctors who've been in the field for decades. Oh, it's gone. It's gone. You can't find any sort of research that's dissenting opinion or dissension of opinion. So a couple of other things I just want to point out real quick. I want to encourage you guys. You swore an oath. I was in the Navy. I have a lot of people that I know that are still in or are veterans. You guys swore an oath to the Constitution, not to propaganda, not to the CCP, not to the United Nations, not to Big Pharma, not to anybody else, but to the Constitution to protect and defend and uphold our rights that are given to us by God, unalienable. The mask is one little puzzle to the big thing, but it matters more than you guys think it does. Do you want to recognize your city and all here? We've got to stop with the BS. We've got to think through facts, through logic, through love, and through faith, not through propaganda and virtue signaling and other policies that other dictators have passed in other countries. We are one nation under God, not against fear. So I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you so much for your time. Take questions if you have.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it all.
Next up.
Hi. My name is Jessica Mears. First off, good afternoon. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to speak here today. Today, I'm here to represent my family in the silenced majority. Yes, I said silenced. And I would like to touch on health mandates. Growing up, I remember hearing to always know my place. So today, I ask you, do you know your place? Dr. Mintz is a doctor that practices medicine. Practice, as in there is no cure-all or one-size-fits-all approach, just like this mask mandate. Yes, there is exemptions for face masks. Can you please tell me why, if there is exemptions, but there is no choice in your mandate? You have opened a floodgate of mask Nazis that shame you for not wearing your masks. We do not know everybody's story. We cannot be all in this together until we are choosing how we are in this together. I hear your cry to the lady at Target that did not have a mask on and got a car rammed into her heel, on her foot, on her hands. I hear the scientists, veterans with PTSD, domestic abuse survivors, and friends and neighbors who cannot get out. Anxiety over these masks is real. Suicide, it is. We have our community putting on masks so they don't get yelled at at the store, maybe so they can eat and enter the store or the coffee shop, coca burr. Are we going to bully them so we can stop a virus? Where are our death counts of suicide due to our governor's orders? Cause of death won't be committed. Cause of death is health mandates that silence our points of free will. Let that sink in. You have absolute There's some regular stranger out on the street that just can't wear masks. Where there is risk, there must be choice. I'm sorry.
We're getting a little bit of feedback.
Okay. Where there is risk, there must be choice. Dr. Minz is not my doctor of choice. We choose our primary decision. We choose whether to accept or ignore the recommendations of our doctors give us. They cannot force us to follow the recommendations. It is our choice. We allow murder to babies as a choice, but there is no choice for a face mask? Or one could argue, there is a mask, or, I'm sorry, one could argue that the mask is not about me, but I could argue about how oxygen is not about you, it is about a human life. Wrapping up, I just want to remind you to know your place. Know your place on what you can tell me to do for my health. To know your place as an elected politician. To know your place as a doctor, not a dictator. Until then, my place will be here speaking for the silenced majority that you push your mask mandates on even harder every time we try to be heard. Can you hear me now? Thank you.
Thank you for speaking today. I don't see any questions. Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, please.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No questions. David Dennis, Commissioner Dennis, do you have a question?
We're getting an awful lot of noise coming out of the boardroom that's distorting everything else. I don't know if everybody else is hearing that or not, but something is happening in the room.
Yes, I am.
Our speaker's being able to communicate with us. Thank you.
Okay, we'll check that out. I don't know what's happening. Is it still happening?
Yes.
There's no questions for Ms. Jessica, so the next speaker, please.
Commissioner, I think you're speaking, but we're having a real good time to understand what you're saying.
Well, I haven't done anything different, and besides just speaking up, is that better?
There's some kind of distortion in the boardroom.
Is this better?
That's a little bit better, Commissioner.
Okay, I just switched the microphone.
I'm not getting any distortion right now, but whatever it was.
Okay, it must be my mic.
It was difficult to understand the speaker.
Okay, Jessica, thank you so much for being here today. I don't see any questions for you.
I'm still there. I'm still getting distortion in the boardroom.
We haven't done anything different, so we'll just love technology as much as we can right now to hopefully get it to work. Tanya, can you hear me at all?
I can hear you, but there's a lot of duh-duh, and so I'm having a little bit of trouble.
Okay, well, we're finished with.
Commissioner Howell, can you speak into that microphone?
I just turned my microphone on, can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's clearly coming from that room, because I can barely hear what Commissioner Howell is stating as well.
In our room. Commissioner Mike Sir can handle it, there's only three more speakers. So I'm sure he can handle it.
Yeah, just mute us all.
Because that room isn't working.
I assure you, five more on the list.
Okay, do we have any questions for the current speaker, Jessica?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Howell, I have a broken speaker. Do you have something you want to say?
Well, I am going to have something to say at the end of this.
Commissioner Mike Sir, do you want me to go ahead and move on with the next speaker?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hi. So my name is Sarah Pratt. I wasn't going to come. I have major anxiety, so I'd rather, think I'd rather die of spiders or snake bites than public speaking. But I wanted to share my story. I am one of the silent majority. I'm a survivor of COVID-19. I got it back in December when it was the unknown, we don't know what's going on, virus. And I just suffered through Tylenol Ibuprofen, because that's all that I thought I had the flu. I never get the flu shot. I'm usually a healthy person, get the common sniffs and sniffles and coughs, but nothing that I have to go to the doctor's office for. My husband later got the coronavirus as well in February. He works at Spirit. And he also, he went to the doctor. I thought it was the flu. I've seen the flu before, and we got tested, he got tested, it was A and B negative, no flu, but it was upper respiratory system, had all the symptoms of COVID that we later found out was COVID. I did not catch it again in February, two months after my husband got it. And I haven't worn a mask, I did wear a mask once to Costco to get just the basic laundry soap. And I was terrified, and I couldn't walk, and I put a mask on to be able to shop and just to get laundry soap for my family. And what was frustrating was, you know, the employees were wonderful, they were nice, they were caring, they told me to take it off. I've never gone back since, and I wondered why I was having such an adverse reaction to wearing a mask. And in my past, I have been a victim of rape, and this is something that you all have made an exception for. And although now I am a target because I do not comply wearing a mask, I have not let this be part of my identity, because I've received ecclesiastical counsel and I've moved on, but this whole thing has brought everything back. And my children watch me as people, these Karens at Walmart, attack me, ask me, where's my oxygen? Where's my mask? Where's my cart? Dave Dennis, where's my dog? I don't have a therapy dog, you know? But all I have is a faceless mask. And what's frustrating, or a faceless, or a maskless face, I'm sorry, what's frustrating is, I have to show that, and I still get persecuted. I'm still getting yelled at by people just to, I'm, like Lacey Cruz said yesterday, go in, do your business, and get out. That's what I do, and yet I'm still confronted by people and by persecution. And I've seen it in my church, which is crazy. I've seen it throughout the community, and it's really upsetting. It's upsetting my children. How do I, how do I save face in front of my children when I'm getting yelled at and attacked? I plead and I beg you to unmask, be healthy people. I don't even care, I mean, if people don't want to wear masks, if they're sick and they don't want to wear masks, that's their choice. But for me, I'm an easy target, because I'm not wearing a mask, because I don't have a card from my doctor saying I have a condition. I just know how I feel, and it's very frustrating to hear representatives advocate for kindness, and yet they say something else the next day. I appreciate everything that Jim Howell has done, because I know that he is the only one who does his homework. And I know he's not up for reelection, but God help him, I sure hope he stays in there, because he's the only one who listens. Thank you.
I don't know if this is working. I'd like to just say thank you for your bravery today. Can you hear me?
Commissioner, did you say thank you for your time? There's no question.
No, I have a comment I'd like to make.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I think the muzzling's coming from the boardroom. So I don't see any questions, ma'am, so thank you for your comments. I'm sorry for some of the hardship. We all can tell it's got some emotion around it.
It needs to stop, and we need representation. We need you guys to set the example and to stop this. Call a dog a dog, call a pig a pig. Don't parade that this isn't okay, please.
Okay, so I understand Commissioner Cruz is trying to say something, but it's not coming. Commissioner, if you want to try again, but it's pretty muzzled. Or try a different microphone.
She stepped out of the room to find another microphone, I think. We would both like to make comments if possible.
Okay. Okay.
I can go in the other room and they can talk after that, because I can be in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker, please.
I'm Anthony Riker. I'm a resident of Cedric County, and this is to the elected officials that represent us. Since this whole thing started, you know, I think we originally were told that it was going to last two weeks, and so here we are, six months later. I'm pretty sure we have 51,000 cases, I think there's like 555 deaths, if I'm not mistaken. And in Cedric County, we have just over 500,000 people, and so therefore we're at about 10% of the population that's gotten this virus so far. And if we extrapolate that out over the next few years, I think that puts us at like the four-year mark before this ever starts to go away of all the people who are going to get it. And this is just one virus. There's lots of viruses out there, there's more versions of the coronavirus, so the question is, when does it end? And what is next? So I guess my fault to you guys would just, ultimately, would be to be reasonable. And, you know, I think it would be a good idea if we had multiple medical doctors who were giving their opinion about what's transpiring and the recommendations for you guys to go and act on. I certainly don't leave you your job. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work that you do. And I think it's just time for everyone to look at just the logistics of this thing and understand that we are in a position where we have elected officials, we are a free country, this is a country that's supposed to have their voice heard, and I just don't think that's been going on for a long time now. With 10% of the population having the virus, we know a lot of other people are going to get it. And I certainly greatly value people's lives, I care deeply about the people that I live with and that I live in the community with, and so I definitely don't take it lightly. I definitely am not anti-mask, I'm simply anti-mandate. I do not believe that you should have the right to tell us what we should do with our health. And that's the end of what I've got to say. Thank you, guys.
We're trying to reset it after this one.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Commissioner Howell, you want to wave? Do you have questions? Yeah, you might just want to go to your office. Commissioner Howell.
Okay, I'll go to my office.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time. Next speaker. Hey Lance, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. I don't know how long it'll take, I'm just going to read from a lawsuit that's being prepared against the mask mandate. Been in some meetings with people here in town, lawyers here in town, and a lot of real patriots that have spoken previously today. And I just wanted to make maybe a few notes of what's been said in this lawsuit. Senator Rand Paul said this, referring to coronavirus. The vast majority of people that get this are asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic. If you look at under age 18, the mortality rate's about 1 in a million. If you look at age 18 to 45, the mortality rate's about 10 in 100,000. Above that, it increases, but interestingly, it is still pretty small, and the vast majority, even people up to 65 years of age, it may well be between 95 and 99% have a very mild case of this. So I'm not saying it's a benign disease, people do get sick and die from this, but your chances are good. We shouldn't live in fear forever. We should take normal precautions, we should assess the risks. People who are older should take more precautions, but we shouldn't, you know, cover the faces of our children and say you're going to have to live your whole life with your mask. We shouldn't do that, and the government definitely shouldn't mandate. Rand Paul, August 13, 2020. That's what Senator Paul thinks about it, and I agree with him. Also in this case listed was this comment, comment 16. With the Wichita mask mandate, the lockdown, the shuttering of businesses, the increased unemployment, and all the other fallout, shutting everything down, the citizens of Wichita at large have sacrificed fundamental freedoms, which sacrifice stemmed from heat of the moment decisions by Wichita leadership. The problem is, the heat of the moment is over, yet the rash decision-making without appropriate scientific proof and deliberation persists, eroding trust in the county officials so much that Wichitaans had no other choice but to vocalize this protest. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, that concludes our speakers. I did get a message from you that you'd like me to bring in the previous speaker.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'm not sure, was her name Sarah?
Yes, would you give me just a moment to retrieve her real quick, please?
Sure, thank you. Commissioners, if you'll bear with me, I just, I wanted to address her, but the mics weren't working, so.
While we're waiting, Commissioner Howell, I know you wanted to make a few comments, but if the microphones are not good, can you either through your phone or through your office? And then we can, oh, there you are. Okay, you got your phone on. You want to say something, see if we hear it? Do a test. I don't know.
Feedback, I need to go to my office.
We can hear you now. Commissioner Howell, we can hear you. So if you use that instrument. Okay, I'll go back.
Sarah Pratt? Can I address Sarah real fast, commissioners? Jim, I think we're getting some feedback from you, if you would mind.
I'm stepping out.
Sarah, I was trying to address you earlier, but my microphone wasn't working, so thank you for coming back in. I just first want to say how I appreciate your bravery, telling us what you told us today. That was something that I'm sure is not easy to talk about, and I just, I appreciate you coming in to tell us that. The comments that I made yesterday were relating to folks who don't wear masks and telling those who do wear masks to leave people alone who don't wear masks. So I want to make that clear, because I understand that there are a lot of people who are taking it upon themselves to run around and run people down. And so that's really what I was trying to get across. I know that some of my comments have been taken out of context, and so for that, I'm sorry that I didn't communicate as clearly as I should, but that really was the jux of my comments, to really advocate to people, to say, we don't know what everyone's going through. Do your business, get in and out, and leave people alone. So I hope that you'll understand that's really what I was meaning to say. And again, I appreciate you coming today to share your story with the community at large. I know that's not easy, and I just want to, I want to say I commend you for your bravery.
It's really hard, especially when I've got little children in the store, and, you know, I'm being attacked, and I had a lady at Walmart say, where's your mask? And I said, well, I'm an exception. Well, where's, you know, where's your oxygen? Why aren't you wearing, why aren't you in a cart? Where's your dog? And I was like, well, the son of your business. And she goes, well, it isn't, you're in the same store as me, and you're breathing my air. And then, you know, tried to be calm, and then turn around and wish her a happy day, even though I wanted to ram her in the car, with the cart, and I wanted to knock her over, because I was really upset that she would attack me for that, for me not even addressing her. And then on top of that, she tells me, I hope I don't kill anybody. I mean, I had this back in December. My mother, I saw her the next day, and she is a survivor, she's two times had a stroke, has had a stroke, and she's survived. I have not killed her. And it's really, it's so much unkindness that needs to be spread. I appreciate billboards that say, wear a mask if you're able, but it still points a target on me for not wearing, whether I choose to or not. My husband has headaches, he had served in the military, he has PTSD, I mean, he, or, you know, post-traumatic, whatever, you know, he's very, has very high stress levels, and he has to wear a mask at work, he does. But when he goes out in public, he's my advocate, he's my champion, I call him, because I can't function if somebody comes and attacks me. I feel a safety within.
Well, Sarah, I hope that people hear your story today. I hope that people will understand that there are things that you can't see, and we need to quit assuming that people just aren't doing it to be defi- and we need to quit assuming that people just aren't doing it to be defiant. Uh, we need, we need to quit assuming that and, and I, again, I thank you for sharing your story.
Well, I don't know when that's going to end because people will assume until there is, until everybody's unmasked. I mean, if, if you're sick, I understand, you know, I've had people who are sick and they wear a mask and they stay home, whatever. Um, if you're a single mom, you can't, you have to eat your medicine and you're sick, how do you go to the store? It's just, it's counterpoint for everybody and it's, it's really frustrating that you have to mask the whole, a one-size-fits-all so that everybody's comfortable, it's really frustrating.
It's, it's a difficult time for sure, thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Say there, there will be on one, there are.
Yes, um, okay, well, that's the, the end of the speakers of the, uh, public comment section. So, uh, I'll make a motion to receive and file as we've had them all. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Chairman, I would like to make some comments.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, we got a motion and a second to receive and file, so, uh, but Jim, uh, I mean, Commissioner Howell, go ahead if you've got a comment you want to make.
Just a couple of, I'd like to make a few comments, if you don't mind. Um, I've listened to a total of 39 speakers today, during public comments. Um, we did, uh, receive a number of, of, uh, comments written form. The vast majority of those were, were against the mask mandate. I think today, we had, uh, one speaker on, on issue of suicide, we had a few on issue of schools. But the general theme today was about responsibility and freedom and about choice. And, uh, there was a common theme about the commissioners need to own the order, that whatever order we're going to have, it should come from the elected officials rather than listening to a single, uh, a single, uh, doctor, we should, we should have a variety of input. I just want to say number one, we've had great speakers today, I've heard them all, I've listened intently. I appreciate them taking time to come out. I would say generally speaking, today's experience on public comment was, was woefully inadequate in terms of our configuration. What, we might want to consider being in the same room with the public, uh, speakers. Uh, if we have to, as commissioners, travel to their, their location, that's another option for us to consider. If we have the space to be in the same space that they are, um, I'd be willing to do that if that would help. We had a, a camera that was on our, our large screen today that was a, it came across as being a blue screen. Um, I didn't think that was, uh, very good. Um, having to sign up on Tuesday by 5:00 PM, I think, is, is unnecessary considering we have the ability now to hear from people virtually. There's a reason to manage, uh, people in our own room, if we're going to do this virtually, I don't think we need to, uh, have an arbitrary cutoff of 5:00 PM on Tuesday. I'll just say that, uh, having three commissioners out of the room, I thought was not ideal. Uh, even though I know you guys were listening in your offices, I think it's better for us to be together. I would say finally, uh, you know, a number of people brought up the issue of Constitution today, today, we, we had a proclamation on Constitution. And so, I'll just say, you know, the Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment have one thing in common and that is that they both deal with the issue of, of liberty and property and the idea of due process and equal protection. I think there's an argument today that we are deprived of people of life, liberty and, and property when we have these, our orders. I would much rather settle back in on education and advocacy. I'm not very happy with, with our current mandate that we currently have. So, that's my comments for right now, I'll probably reach out to these speakers individually after we adjourn today, thank you.
Chairman, I have just one final comment I'd like to make, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, yep, please do.
Many of the speakers today mentioned, um, that we, um, are listening to one physician and, um, that's just not the case. I myself consult with a number of physicians and I know Dr. Minz also consults with the Medical Society. Every single Monday, we consult with the head physician of Via Christie, of Wesley Medical Center. Um, so there are a number of, um, health experts and physicians who have spent the bulk of their careers studying and understanding medicine. Um, and so that, I, I just, I just kind of want to clear that up because there, there are a number of physicians that are consulted and not just one. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other comment? Okay, uh, we did have a motion to receive and file, we need to make sure we take a vote on that. I've also got, our county councilman Mike Pupus is in my office, so he's present, uh, if we have any questions, but. So we have a motion and a second to receive and file all the comments. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you're there, take the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. So thank you again, everybody, for the comments. Um, it was a kind of a learning experience for us today and let's hope that, I think next week it'll, it'll be a little, maybe a little changes and hopefully for the better with a lot of things. So, um, unless there's any other comments, which I don't see the commissioners, so we will stand adjourned. Thank you, and this is my gavel and I just hit, so have a nice day.